I call to order the regular meeting of the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, the 8th of May, 2024. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Berry. Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Zakary.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson's here. Chairperson Carmichael.
Here. We have a quorum. I invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Don't sit down. Anybody who is going to, intends to testify tonight needs to be sworn in, so please raise your right hand, swear that any and all true, any and all testimony that you give will be the complete truth. Thank you. And another reminder, please, everybody, staff and board members included, silence your electronic devices. And I think we've beaten the sign-in to death. Everybody sign in who intends to testify. First item is the approval of the minutes of the April 10, 2024 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? To move, Thomas.
Second, Zakary.
Motion and second. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Zakary.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Berry, apposite. And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. And it's approved. And before we get started, I'd like to just review the public hearing procedures. First, the applicant will be invited forward to introduce himself and his issue, agenda item. And after that, staff will weigh in with guidance force and comments and background and so forth. And then it's the, anyone from the public will be invited to come forth and make comments, ask questions, and so forth. Remember that the in and all testimony is directed at the commission. We don't turn around and talk to other people in the audience or carry conversations that way. All testimony comes forward. And after the public, then it's the commissioner's turn. We'll have our chance to ask questions and make comments. And if everything goes well, we'll be able to get to a vote. Reminder that the vote of this commission is a recommending vote. Our is a recommending to the village board. And the village board makes the final say-so on all agenda items. See, we have nothing under old business tonight. We'll go right into new business. First is a public hearing, PZC 007, 2024, request by SBIL 3, Westmont Limited Liability Corporation, the petitioner, and WL Property Acquisitions Limited Liability Corporation, 101 Ogden, the owner, or 101 West Ogden Avenue in Westmont, and 3D Property Management Limited Liability, the beneficial owner, that is, for 107 West Ogden Avenue, to operate an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization and a separate restaurant operation with a drive-through for the following. We have four items we have to get through. First is a special use permit request for an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization. Second, special use permit request for a restaurant drive-in. Third, a site and landscape plan approval, and finally preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate two lots into one lot. Who the petitioner would step forward and address the commission first. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Marty Atio. I am here representing Starbuds and talk to you a little bit more about our project at Westmont. First, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on Starbuds. We were, we started out back in 2010. It was a family-owned operation. It was a medical, at that time. Fast forward to 2013, when Colorado became recreational, which was the second state to become recreational, but the first regulated state, Starbuds was awarded the first recreational license in the state. And we take pride in that. Going fast forward now, today, we operate through 10 states, 33 locations, one grow in Rockford, here in Illinois, where all our locations are family and friend owns. One thing, too, we always take pride in is that we try to incorporate our employees to better themselves and become partners in future developments, which has happened here in Illinois. An existing employee that we started with us in Burbank have elevated to our second location in Riverside, sorry about that, and became a managing partner in Riverside. These are just one story of many that has happened throughout the country at Starbuds, and it's something that we definitely take pride in. Our primary goal at Starbuds is more than sell cannabis, is educate the public. Just because we've been in such an early game, we've come to realize that when we've come across our customers, they really don't know what they want. They know it's cannabis, they know it's weed, they know all these other terms, they know they've either dabbled in it back in the 70s, or 80s, or 60s, and now it's come to become legal, and they want some education on it, on the edible part, on the vape part, on the consumption, on the flour, on the pre-rolls. There's just so much. And one thing at Starbuds across the country that we make sure that we do, we have an interaction one-on-one. If you've visited many, many dispensaries in Illinois, a lot of them, without naming names, will direct you to a kiosk and allow you to make your order at a kiosk or a tablet before having any interactions with a butt tender. We feel the opposite. We want to make sure we have no kiosses and that we have a one-on-one interaction with every single customer, because primarily, before you even go and check out or buy a product, we want to educate the person on what effects it has, what you're looking for, what are you trying to accomplish? Is it medicinal? Is it geared to arthritis? Is it geared to a specific ailment? And our butt tenders are all trained to kind of guide the person in that way. Our average time with a new customer can vary anywhere between eight and 12, 15 minutes. But as they, as they come again and again, our average wait time now goes down to four to five minutes per customer. That's how well we've come to interact with our customers. And we have customers that will, you know, specifically seek out a particular butt tender, because that butt tender knows that ailment. They know exactly what they're looking for, so they don't want to go through that process again. They see that butt tender, and they say, okay, you know what? Here's what happened last time. Can you guide me to a higher or lower dosage? Things like that. This is where we pride ourselves at Starbuds, is education, 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 more than anything else. Now, at Starbuds, we've always taken a proactive thing with the community. You know, one of the things that we like to do is we always interact with non-for-profits at that community, in the community in particular. Perfect example, in Rockford, our grow, Caviar Grow, has interacted with Women's Shelter, and we've sponsored many things at the new Women's Shelter for battered women. In Colorado, Habitat for Humanity, there's just endless things that we try to gear to that community per location. And we try to, and really be immense into the community with the non-for-profit as much as we can. It's not just a business that's there operating, and you don't hear from us. We try to engage in multiple ways through non-for-profits with the particular non-for-profit that the village is really interested in. Now, our footprint, like I said, it reaches through 10 states roughly, 33 locations. We have approximately, right now, I think we're up to 300 employees. The location that we are currently looking to open up at Westmont will bring in about 25 to 30 new jobs. Our employee retention rate is 90%. It's 90% because of the environment, the working environment, the pay scale. Our average butt tenders after tips average somewhere between $25 and $28 an hour. These are livable wages. This is something that we pride ourselves, again, at Starbuds, that we're just not out to make every dollar we can. We like to give it in back to either through the community, to the non-for-profits, or even to our own employees. So there's a couple of things, too, that we really try to also focus on, is the security. Security of our customers, security of our staff, and security of the community. That's always been, early on, a big thing, is security. You know, what are you going to do to provide security to our community, to your customers? One, we start right off the bat, is that we have a full-time security while we're operational, full-time armed security. And on top of that, our camera system are tapped into state police, and we have a live viewing when operations are not in business at the time. When we close, we have live 24-hour viewing that's being monitored all the time at the location. And when people walk in, when we are operational, you go through several checks for ID. First time they walk in, they have to check in before they even go inside the sales floor. It's not, it's not somebody just reading it. It's actually gone to a scanning system, and it's very simple. If it allows you to go when you're 21, it's valid ID, nice screen on the screen. If it's not, it writes up red, and it gives out a buzzer. That's one step. Then, once they go inside, we'll ask for the ID again. So there's another layer of steps to make sure that people are, that are in there are of age and that are able to purchase the product that is in question. We definitely keep everything, our camera systems are in compliance with state regulation, which is 180 days, which exceeds any other system for a regular business. So if anything happens within the 180 days, we have backup internally and externally, so it's not just onsite. And if, say, police or local police need to access it, it's easily accessible at any time.
Is that internal as well as external?
Yes. So the external, too, part of it, just, it's state-regulated. It's something that is a must for everybody, just in case things that happen, whether it's fires or, you know, people break in and try to steal the system. It's somewhere on the cloud externally where state police could access it at any time. And they actually have access to it at any time, without our permission. They could just go in and pull out anything at any time and get it. So all our products is state-tested, or not state-tested, but it's all tested by state licensed labs. And it's, they come, the testing is in multiple of things. They test for mold, they test for any particles that may be in the growing process, they test for pesticides. There's, it's called COAs. And those things that go all the way along with that particular product, all the way out the door. At Caviar, we've even taken a step further, that we put a barcode on all our products that we sell throughout the state, where if you were to buy our product, you could actually scan the barcode, and it pulls out the full testing certificate and tells you exactly what was found in that product that you bought. This is something that we've done above and beyond what's regulated. We wanted to let the public know that they're getting a safe product, and we wanted to be the first to introduce that to the state. And that's something we're actually really proud of. So again, the community engagement is very important, that we really also like to focus on. Once we're operational, we try to kind of pinpoint what, what non-for-profit is very important and dear to the city or village. And we approach those non-for-profits, and we try to work out a action plan on how we could be most effective in the community. Because being active in the community as a business, we feel that's the best way to bring positive to our business, but to the product that it's not what people perceived to be 20 years ago, how it was. After all that being said, there's a good tax revenue, right? Villages want this for the tax revenue. It's a big plus. It helps out. Just in Riverside alone, the last four months, we've generated $250,000 for Riverside in the last four months. So right now, we're projected to do a little bit over $1 million just from one store for Riverside. Burbank's is a little bit more, and this is where it helps the cities for funding, I guess.
Frank, sir, this commission, that's not our concern. We're not the politicians that you need to sell this to.
I think. Now, we've incorporated a bakery next door to Starbuds, but I'm going to bring another person on to talk about the bakery, owner of Wake and Bakery, Brianna Banks. And then we'll take questions.
Great. Thank you.
My turn. This is first for me, so fine. I'm Brianna Banks. I am one of the co-founders of Wake and Bakery. We started in 2020, two months before COVID started, so that was fine. About 10 months later, we became very busy. We started in Lakeview. From that point on, in the last five years, we have 10 stores running, of which some are in Arizona, Florida, one's about to go to Tennessee, they're in Raleigh, North Carolina, and here. We are the first to have a coffee shop that you can get a regular coffee, and you and your kids can come into, and you can get a cannabis, well, sorry, not cannabis, hemp-infused coffee, which contains less than 0.3% THC in it, while your kid can have a lemonade on the side. That's perfectly normal. All of our pastries are either infused or uninfused. We do not make them the same. So if you have a chocolate chip cookie that is infused with hemp, you do not have it. That's not infused. Thanks. All of our stuff contains, anything that has hemp in it, contains less than 0.3% THC, which is the federal law for 2018, the Farm Bill. So we sell way below it. We get all of our products tested, just like they do, which is not a requirement, but we do it anyways. It is federally legal in many states, in all of the United States. Like I said, we have them in different states. We can have it here, we can have it in Hawaii if we would like to. Hemp is typically grown outdoors in large fields, where marijuana is often cultivated indoors as well. Hemp is, has a wide range of industrial uses besides just our coffees and our teas. People put it in oils, tinctures, topicals, which we also have as well in the store, also containing less than 0.3%. Hemp is not psychoactive due to its low THC content and is non-intoxicating. No one has ever died from hemp. Marijuana is higher THC levels, much higher, actually, and can vary in psychoactive effects, including euphoria, relaxation, altered perception, increase in appetite. Our products do have the low THC, but there are benefits to it as well. We are actually, we were voted number two products for people to eat who have had chemotherapy, so they tend to enjoy our products, because they don't get the high, but they get the effects of the CBD or CBN or CBT in them. Hemp products contain higher levels of CBD, that's why they're also not going to get you that high, and they're non-intoxicating as well. This is an example of our menu. You can see that is strictly lemonades, teas, coffees, lattes, two different sizes. Something we do in the store is if it is infused, it is a different colored cup, for example. Our logo is on it. There's a little, like, check mark box on the backside that says it contains hemp products, or it does not. The coffee cup, for instance, when it's infused, is all these bright colors. It also has a warning label on it saying that it contains it. It also has a seal over the lips, so that you have to pull it off knowing that it has hemp products in it. If it does not, it's a white cup with a little, like, a logo, but nothing on it, for example. So we try and make sure that things are safe, and you know that your kid has a regular lemonade, and you have an infused lemonade. Here's an example of what the store looks like. It's kind of fun. It's also inviting, very warm. Our staff are extremely friendly. They're very educated. When they want you to start with something you've never had it before, they'll tell you what you should start with if you want to try it out. If you had it before, they tell you also where to go. We also use color coordination, so we have a green, a red, and a purple, for instance. If you're brand new to it, you want to stay in the green. If you're not, you stay in the red. So this is just an example of what it looks like on the inside. Our products actually are tested also at state-certified labs. That is not a requirement for us, but we do it anyways, just to make sure we are very consistent. We are so consistent that we are within one milligram of THC. And everything is, like I said, well below the 0.3%. It's also sealed in a package, so our package has a sticker on it of the item. For instance, we have these Rice Krispie bars, and it will have the Rice Krispie name, like a strawberry shortcake Rice Krispie. And it has a QR code, and that QR code goes to the website, and the website shows you the COA. It also tells you how many milligrams it is. It also has a warning label on it. It also says you have to be 21, which is something we also do. We actually card if you do get anything with hemp THC in it, although that's not a requirement. That is something we do do. Anything else? These are some of the stores.
Is there an age limit associated with the CBD?
Illinois, yes, but 18?
18.
18. But we do 21. Yeah. Yeah, we do 21 in the stores anyways. We wanted to follow the cannabis laws, just in case they do switch. We are already doing it, so it's not going to change anything for us.
For all your sites?
Yeah, every single site does it.
Thank you.
Yep. These are some of the places. Lakeview, Wicker Park, Homewood, Downtown Chicago, Logan Square, Burbank, Raleigh, Oak Park, Riverside's coming soon, Lansing, Chattanooga, Tennessee, St. Pete's, Florida, I'm missing a few, Las Vegas, Nevada, actually right on the strip, and a few more places are coming as well. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. How are you? How are you doing? Brian Gould, BR Design and Architecture. I'm the architect, representing Starbuds and working on this development. So first off, wanted to just talk with you about this site. I'm sure you guys are well aware of it. It has been vacant for almost 10 years, or if not more than 10 years now. It was a former Boston market. And site currently has three entrances and exits to this site, which I will go through and will talk about what we plan on doing to just create a better space, safer lot as well for exiting and entrance of this development here. I want to talk about first, though, if we can, we're going to talk about the facade and what we plan on doing to this building. Right now, it's constructed of brick and an EPIS facade. And our, there we go. You guys can see all that, right? Okay, good. So what we plan on doing here is really dressing this building up, right? So we plan on taking some of the brick at the front facade, and we're going to remove some of this brick to put in some new cut stone, which we did at the Burbank location. The whole goal is to try to make every one of our sites as similar as possible, so it's image, right, for everyone that comes to Starbuds. From a construction standpoint, you know, what we're doing to the building is, should be fairly easy to do. We're not doing any major structural work to this building, but in the end, it will definitely dress up what was there now and give it a nice, clean look. So first thing is we're raising the height of the building. So we're raising the building approximately four feet from what it is now. So it's 16 feet. We're raising that up to 20 feet to give us room for more signage at that north elevation. And then we are going to add some more stonework to the front facade and wrap it around the east and west ends as well. The monument sign, it is on this page, so I'll discuss that now. The monument sign we plan on putting at the northeast corner, I will go through that on the site plan coming up here. But nice, you know, matches the building, matches the materials that we're using on the building, provides an address, which is a requirement. And then obviously, the signage will also match the facade for Starbuds as well. This elevation here shows the west end, again, showing you that we will be raising the building height approximately four additional feet to give us some more exposure. And the brick on this side will remain, but we will end up whitewashing that brick. Every elevation will have a whitewash brick on it. South elevation, same. We'll be raising the elevation to 20 feet and whitewashing the brick on this elevation as well. East elevation, raising the elevation on the east end to another 20 feet. And then more cut stone here, wrapped around the drive-through window, as well as the corners that are closest to the north elevation. Floor plan. So as you know, this was a Boston market. We will be, you know, completely removing everything that's inside that facility, and then creating the two spaces here. So your main entrance is going to be a single vestibule that will take you in. And then you will have two choices. You can either go into the Wake and Bakery, where you will have a counter, couple chairs, mainly mostly for carryout, couple tables, though, if you did want to sit there. And then, as you can see, very small facility here, with just the pickup window, drive-through, and then two POSs and a back area where they will store product, et cetera. On the retail end of things for Starbuds, we will have a main lobby, which will be there for security checkpoints, checking IDs before you enter the retail. And then, as they discussed, this is where you won't see kiosks. You're going to see one-on-one as soon as you gain entry to this retail sales floor. It will be a one-on-one experience with one of their team members. And this, this kind of shows you the retail area. Again, we will be developing this a little bit further, but it just gives you an idea of how this store is laid out, very open, inviting. Then there's a secure door that takes you to the back, where there'll be a vault, an intake room. intake room for product that will come in at certain delivery times, off-hours. And then just break room, security room, restroom, office. So for the main building or the overall footprint, you know, we're taking up about two-thirds or more of this space. And then, as you can see, the Wake and Bakery is a very small portion of this overall footprint. So now the best part, the renderings. So this gives you an idea of what this will look like. And as you can see, just a little bit of a difference from what it looks like now. So very clean, very modern. The color scheme is very, you know, there's no flashy colors on the building. It's just very clean looking, black molding, light colors for the EPAS. And then we incorporate more of a gray tones for the cut stone, and then the brick will be whitewashed on all sides. So everything matches. And that would include, obviously, the monument sign and the refuse, which we'll get into as well. So here's another look on the other two sides here, different view, just to give you a sense of each side. So now, real quick, if we can, I'm going to go over to... I got you.
Got it.
Yep. So if we can, let's take a look real quick at the site. So what we plan on doing here is trying to obviously keep as much as we can because we're going to need it. So we're going to need the drive-through, that will remain. Parking, we're actually going to end up gaining parking. And the reason for that is we are going to end up closing off this northeast corner that used to be an entrance and exit onto Ogden Avenue. So this will be closed off and turned into another landscaped area. And this will also contain our monument sign here that is just off the corner, out of sight, so we don't have any issues with blocking the traffic visual of people turning on Grand Street. So that's, you know, that's one thing that we're doing to keep it safe, you know, a lot safer than what it was before. The other thing that we are doing, be aware of, is we are going to be putting in signage at this exit here that is onto Grant. There will be no right turn onto Grant, so we are going to be putting signage there for customers that are leaving that they are not to turn right onto Grant. They need to turn left to go north to Ogden. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. So last thing, the refuse. So right now, the one that's there is just dilapidated. It's in, not in good shape whatsoever. There's no sense in trying to reuse that. It also is within one of the easements, so we are going to relocate that out of the easement and into a location that is actually in a better position for the facility as well, as far as getting to that, to get rid of the refuse. I apologize. I guess the rest of these, I think, are the consolidation of the lots, which we don't need to get into that. Let's see. Last item we can talk about is the landscaping. So we are working on the landscaping for this property. And again, meeting, you know, the requirements of Westmont for landscaping and for not only the easements, but also for the monument sign, which we will have here in this corner. And then also, meeting the requirements for the refuse area and any added landscape area that we're doing for the area that's cut off on Ogden Avenue. So that'll be good, too. Everything's brought up to current standards, and it'll definitely refresh that property. You know what's missing off of here is site lighting. Do we want to go through site lighting?
You can talk about they have it in their packet, so if you do want to mention it.
Okay. So I apologize, it's not up here, but it is in your packet as far as site lighting is concerned. So we plan on using as many of the existing poles, site light poles that are there. One for cost, right? We don't have to reroute electric to those locations. But two, it actually worked out well for us where those were located, using newer LED lights, cutoffs that are meeting the code requirements for dark sky. And there is a photometric plan that's in your packet that shows you, we focus almost all that light, heavy concentration, onto the building, as well as there are sconce lights that are on the building all the way around for safety. It's most important, right? But it worked out really well in the fact that we were able to cut that foot candle number down and get it to what the requirements are, so that it's not, you know, bleeding off into the neighboring properties and the one residential, which is a very, very small residential section to the south. So I think there's only two existing poles that we are going to take down and cap off that we didn't need, so that's working out well. And then lastly, from a traffic standpoint, we did have a traffic study done, and this facility versus what it was or what it could be as a primary restaurant or primary fast food service is less than half as far as the daily count goes for cars. So, you know, we're still able to get the customers in, and we're not, you know, creating a site here that's going to just create more traffic than what, you know, potential fast food restaurant would for not only Ogden Avenue, but also residence, nearby residents as well along Grand Street. So with that, I think, if you have any questions?
All right.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff? Yes. Hello, commissioners. They gave a pretty good overview of the site conditions currently. So this property, as noted, was the old Boston Market property at the corner of Ogden and Grant. It has sat vacant for a few years now. The Boston Market property itself has a, had a drive-through incorporated into it. However, because of the time it's set vacant, they have to come back for this request. So getting into the actual requests themselves, there's four of them. We have the special use for adult-use cannabis dispensing organization, special use for the restaurant drive-through, or drive-in, as our code calls it, a site and landscape plan approval, and apply a subdivision for the two lots that it sits on. So I usually go through this logically, so I usually start talking with the consolidation of the properties first, and then we'll talk about special uses last. So the consolidation itself is required because this property actually consists of two lots, 101 West Ogden and 107 West Ogden. We usually, when we have a new user come in and they're proposing major changes, the correct thing to do is consolidate these properties and provide the necessary improvements to the surrounding area. So in this case, you do have a preliminary plot of subdivision in your packet shown with those improvements. In this case, no stormwater detention is required because they're removing more impervious surface than was required, according to our engineer on staff. As I said, they are going to be improving some of the areas around the property, including the sidewalks, and they're going to be providing extra easements as well at the rear. The next request is their site and landscape plan approval. Brian went through some of the aspects that they're improving, but I'll reiterate a few things. So when we have a new property, when we have a new user moving to an existing property and they're not redeveloping the property entirely, they're renovating it, we try to work with the applicant to see what can be improved and what can't be. So in this case, there is, there are improvements to the building itself, as noted by Brian. The building itself is getting basically a facelift. It's going to be using similar material that's currently on the building, but it's going to include features such as increasing the size of the building and heights, and then including stone veneers, EPAS, glass aluminum windows, and painted brick onto the building. Now, we went a little bit about the parking lot initially. I want to note a few things related to the parking itself. So the first thing I want to note is that they're, as required by code, they're going to be removing the access point along Ogden, the second access point, as these properties are. The current access point is close to the intersection, so our Public Works is requiring the removal of it. And they will have to work with, I believe it's I dot along that road, to get those requirements done. Additionally, they're reconfiguring the parking lot, but they're not proposing major changes to the parking lot design, other than repainting and moving of a dumpster. So the petitioners, as you saw in their site plan, is proposing 54 parking spaces to serve both uses. In this case, each use has different requirements for what the parking is needed. So one of them is, so total, the requirement is 16 for both uses, 16 parking spaces. So there'd be in excess of 38 parking spaces on the site for those uses, based on our Additionally, one thing that Brian did not mention is that they're incorporating fencing along the rear of the site, so they're going to be adding a fence from the neighboring building all the way down through the little area that has the residential on the southwest corner of the property, and then coming back up to finish it up near the dumpster, a six-foot vinyl fence. What was noted was the dumpster enclosure itself. It was requested because of, because they are replacing it to move it out of the easement along this property line. So they're going to be installing a new dumpster that'll be constructed of masonry and building facades that match the current building, or the new building facade. As you can see in some of their elevations, they are showing some signage. Signage is usually not reviewed by staff until permitting. So all the signage that is required here will be reviewed again, and they would have to be in compliance with the current signage in the code, signage regulations in the code. If they aren't and they need a variance, they'd have to come back and request that. To give you an idea, they're permitted one wall sign for one of the units along Ogden and another sign for the other unit along Ogden and Grant, as well as the monument sign that they're proposing along Ogden. What was noted was some of the lighting standards. Brian noted that the lighting is being, the same poles are being used and added fixtures, and they're adding lighting along across the building elevation as well. Some of that is due to state requirements for their use, but also to provide better safety for the site. If they want to add any light poles in the future, they would have to still be in compliance with our illumination standards. Again, if they aren't, they would have to come back and request a variance to those standards. As shown in the landscape plan, they are increasing the number of plantings on site. We do know that there's minimal space to add these plantings, especially along the perimeter of the current parking design. As well as along Ogden, they're proposing some trees on the private property side. Those are shown currently in an easement, a water easement. So those particular trees will have to be reviewed to see if they can be planted there or not in the future by likely our Public Works and our staff as well.
Which one, is that the ones at the northeast corner?
It's the ones basically parallel to Ogden. So those are the site improvements that are being made here. They are not proposing to make renovations to the current drive-through configuration, so that will largely stay the same. But they are designing the site with different parking widths installs, and they're actually adding some parking on the north side, as Brian, I think, noted. So with these requests, obviously, they are requesting two special uses. I'll go through the first special use request, which is the cannabis dispensing organization. The, in your packet, you'll see a little blip about when this was passed through the village in 2020 and those requirements. I'm going to give you some background on that as well. So the code itself states that in the B2 district, an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization is required to get a special use. When we look at this, they have the special use standards that we review pretty often on this commission, and those are listed in the packet as well. But they also have two special conditions listed. So the first special condition is that such special use may be permitted, provided that no building or outdoor portion of the lot containing such use is located within 100 feet of a residency district. Their survey indicates that the building is not, is in compliance with that requirement. And then special condition 14, which is that such special use may be permitted, provided that such use is separated by at least 1,000 feet from a public or private school, and be at least 300 feet from a public park, measured from lot line to lot line. Based on the, their survey, they would be in compliance with that as well. You did hear that they provided a traffic study, the KLOA traffic study, traffic statement. Staff did not have the time to send it out to a reviewer to review that document. However, it is provided in the packet, and they mentioned some of the summaries along with it. The operations plan was provided to you for Starbuds, the dispensing organization. That gives a lot of detail about their operations, their day-to-day employees, et cetera. However, I wanted to note that the business itself, their proposed operations are from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, with, I believe they had eight employees that were going to be on-site at a given time for that use in particular. As they noted, they do have other locations within Illinois that they're currently operating. And I already talked a bit about the parking, so I won't go through that again. The second special use they're requesting is related to the proposed bakery and the drive-in, which is what our code defines as basically a drive-through. As noted, the site previously had a drive-through with the Boston Market property, however, because that use vacated for a certain amount of time, so did the special use for a drive-in. So they have to reapply for that for their restaurant/bakery use. Since it's a special use in the B2 district, the special use standards is what we look at when considering the use itself. So in particular, the drive-through use is the requested special use, not the bakery So the special use standards are applied, but they also have a special condition. That special condition is special condition number two, which states that such special use may be permitted where the owner satisfactorily establishes that there will be no appreciable traffic congestion or hazards to pedestrian safety. As you saw in their site plan, they're proposing changes to the flow of the site as well within their parking lot. So those are the requests themselves. I'm happy to answer questions related to the zoning aspect to it. I'm happy to answer questions related to the zoning aspect to it, but I'll yield to the chair.
Anyone in the public would like to address the commission? Sir, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Coney. My name is John Burke.
To the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is John Burke, and I'm located at 530 West Grant, or North Grant, I should say, which is directly connected to the 107 Ogden Avenue property. I'm a homeowner, so I'm sorry if I make any mistakes here. Basically, will Westmont fail to prosper due to the lack of two cannabis dispensaries or fail due to the presence of them? Tax incentives are an important part. There are unforeseen hidden costs. One of them, additional traffic. The proposed site is .2 miles, approximately 352 yards away from Cuba Leaf, 11 Ogden Avenue. It does not have direct access to a residential street. Previously, Connie's, located 19 West Ogden, had access to both Ogden Avenue and Grant. Currently, there are three businesses on 19 Ogden Avenue with access only from Grant Street with additional two businesses, oh, I'm sorry. I made a mistake there, with access from Grant. Potbelly, Orange Theory, TQLA. Potbelly having a drive-through exiting onto Ogden. With additional two businesses, Phillips Flowers, 529 North Grant, Collision Craft, 536 North Grant, that have residential access via North Grant Street. With hours of operation from as early as 5:00 a.m. to as late as 2:00 a.m. the next day. Some with high traffic flow, including delivery vehicles that park on Grant Street. At times, vehicles park all the way down the 500 block of Grant Street. The current proposal is for two more additional businesses, 101 Ogden, formerly Boston Market, 107 Ogden, that would be directly connected to our property. This would have a significant negative effect on our property value, increasing the traffic volume from four businesses previous to seven businesses on Grant Street. No access should be given to 500 block of Grant for these two businesses. The sign is not going to stop people from turning. I hereby oppose this project.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Laurel Rugan, and I live at 513 North Grant. And this gentleman just covered all the things that I was thinking of because the traffic flow, as it is trying to get onto Ogden Avenue, I mean, before they had the restaurant, I mean, Boston Market and everything, from years ago, it's a lot heavier now. It's almost impossible to turn right at that corner to get onto Ogden because there's so much more traffic. And I was worried about more cars coming down Grant. It's impossible to even get out of my driveway with people avoiding that corner, Cass and Ogden, so they cut through Grant. So, but I totally agree. He covered a lot of things with heavy traffic flow and everything else, and they had mentioned about dark skies lighting. Well, I hope it helps, but it doesn't help cut down with the Tesla lighting across the street, which I can see all the way down the block when I'm there. But that was the concern, about even more traffic and impossible to live around there. I mean, it's like becoming a nightmare. I don't even want to stay there the way it's getting, so thank you for speaking on to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to, okay.
Commissioner, my name is Rosando Galvez.
To the microphone, please.
Hi, Commissioner, my name is Rosando Galvez, and I'm here on behalf of Starbuds. I'm an employee, and if the, if it does go through, I'll be one of the persons that will be kind of in lead in the position of leadership. I just want to say, my experience with cannabis, you know, I've been in the industry for three years. I could probably say that the other dispensary in the neighborhood, I took part in that as well. So I'm very familiar with the cannabis industry. It's an honor being with this group and helping them bring a cannabis store to the village. And I just want to say that it would be an honor to continue to do that. I know we have other issues that we kind of need to work on as far as street and cars and traffic, and I believe that's something that we could definitely work on, and if the project does proceed, I think it would work out for everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? And let's go to the commissioners.
I have a question.
This is our village attorney, Mr. Zemanek.
I just had a question about the bakery and the products that are being sold. I think they were described, there wasn't anything in the materials that were provided about the bakery, and I was wondering if the bakery has just CBD products, or if it has Delta 8 products, or if it has Delta 9 products in it.
So there is no Delta 8 at all, and no Delta 10, just Delta 9. And CBD, you can get in your drinks, but it is not in any of the food.
So Delta 9 does have psychoactive properties, but in a lower amount than...
Has psychoactive, sorry, psychoactive properties in a higher amount than .3%, or under the .3%.
Delta 9 does?
Delta 9 does have psychoactive activities, correct. But we stay below the .3% in hemp versus marijuana.
So I don't know if commissioners are aware, it's a gray area of the law where Delta 8, Delta 9, Delta 10 are derived from hemp, as opposed to, if I understand right, the marijuana plant?
Correct.
And there's the federal farm bill that allowed the growing and sale of hemp products. CBD, you see everywhere, you know, salves and pills and stuff that help with allegedly pain relief, things like that, completely legal. Gets a little murkier when you get into Delta 8, Delta 9, Delta 10 products because they do have mild psychotropic effects. And when you see, like, you know, with your drinks and baked goods, you know, the way they're advertised, just so the commissioners are aware, they have names that promote, they're similar to what you'd see in the next-door cannabis store, even though they're not regulated by the state or the federal government. Typically, they're considered either, I guess, semi-synthetic products because there has to be some chemical process to get, at least for Delta 8.
So that's why we actually don't do Delta 8 anymore, is because it can typically come synthetically, but we do not do it at all. So there's no 8 in any of our products. Like you see on a COA, it'll show you that it has actually 08 in it. We stepped out of that after, two years ago, and into just the Delta 9 from hemp, just so that we don't have anything synthetic.
When you sell a microdose in a drink of 100 milligrams...
That's a big one. That's not a micro, that's a big, that's a macro.
Oh, I'm sorry, macrodose.
Okay. That's a macro.
It's a macrodose.
Yes.
What does that equate to for total THC percentage in that one drink?
It's less than .2% in the drink. The drink is 24 ounces.
And do you regulate age, you may have said this, I apologize, age sales? Did you say it's only 21?
21.
Or over?
Yes, 21 or over for anything that is infused, and obviously, anybody can come in and just get a coffee or a lemonade, which we sell like specialty coffees, so people definitely come in with a new Starbucks, in that case. Like banana foster, for instance, is a specialty drink we have.
And so with the drive-through, can you explain the ID process if someone wants an infused drink?
So they'll still check the ID at the drive-through. Your drinks will also contain like a seal, so you cannot open them. On the drinks themselves, they have warning labels that say, "Do not drink and drive." We obviously do not permit that, or like advertise that in any sort of way, it's on every single one of our products. Same thing. So it will be sealed with a sticker, like also a sticker, so you have to actually pull it off in order to like drink it, I guess. And so there's two steps, it says that on the cup and it says that on the sticker. If it's infused, if it's not, it's just in a regular cup, and you get it, walk it out the door, just like you would in a drive-through.
Okay. Just wanted to ask about that.
No problem.
Thanks, that's all I had, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners. Commissioner Scales, would you start?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. I just have a few quick questions, maybe a couple for staff quickly. In looking at page five of the, of the staff report, you mentioned that some of the recommendations were not incorporated as additional rounds of review by staff would have been warranted. Can you clarify that a little further?
Due to their timeline of trying to get to a planning and zoning meeting, some of the recommendations, which require additional review time, weren't incorporated into their proposal. So there are a few items that were lingering, such as including additional landscaping, those type of things.
Anything that materially affects the site plan?
So one of the items we were recommending, but we're no, are no longer recommending, is we're recommending curb site. But due to some of the topography of it and sheeting and speaking with our engineer, we are no longer recommending it because it would start to pool in the parking lot. So some of those aspects weren't included. They did propose that initially, but it was backtrack because of that reason.
Okay. Any other site plan items?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. And then...
So I'll try to answer some of that as well. So when it's a redevelopment, the code is not specific to say, when you have a redevelopment, you must bring everything on the site up to current standards, like we would if it was a brand-new building. So we always try to say, well, what's being proposed and what's reasonable to request at the time. So we did start with a much longer list of requests, because when we started looking at the site, we said, there's a lot of asphalt, can it be cut back any, can we get more landscape around the edges? Can we get it curbed? Because right now, all the water just sheets off in whatever direction the topography is sending it. But when you start curbing it, then if it's, if there's areas that are low, then you have to figure out how to get the water out of those areas. So we kind of did say, well, asking for one thing like curbs then resulted in needing four other things to get fixed, such as storm drains that then you say need to be connected into the storm sewer that's in Ogden Avenue, which becomes a much bigger...
And these are interior parking lot curbs that you're talking about, correct?
Yes, interior parking lot.
Are there inlets that are on-site? I guess I didn't know.
There are no inlets.
So there are no inlets.
So there's no current stormwater this year. So what it is, is it's a balancing act to say, do we feel that what's being proposed is fair to the amount of renovation that's happening? So I like to look at it as, so what is being done? So we're getting the curb cut that's along Ogden Avenue that existed there because these used to be two separate lots with two separate buildings, and they both had their own access points. We wanted to have that removed because it is in conflict with people trying to exit Grant Street and either turn left or right. And it also affected anyone that was heading west on Ogden that wanted to turn in, they'd be in that suicide lane to turn left to get in there, and they're blocking those cars that are trying to come out of Grant Street. So we felt very important that we should, we should hold to that improvement. Also...
Just real quick, I'm sorry, just to make sure, because that is one question I had. So you're removing that first entrance near Grant?
Yes, the one that is on Ogden, that is closest.
Okay.
Which gives them area to add more landscape and put it around the sign that they're proposing. They're proposing more landscape in front of the building. As Scott indicated, there is a water main easement that's there, and there's a water main that runs under that easement. And then there's particular rules and regulations of how close a tree can be planted to both the line itself and then any, any of the valves or anything that's there. So they have shown the trees, they're willing to install the trees. We're just not 100% confident that once we locate everything, that there's room for the trees because of where the water main is. So we're getting increased landscape. There's a facelift that's occurring on the building itself, and then there's the fence that is being put around the backside to the residential property. The fence that is back there is at the end of its life. It also fences off the backside of that body shop because we can always see all of the body parts that are sitting back there, so it's kind of hiding that. And then we're, a new dumpster enclosure, and then some kind of, generally the same parking lot setup, but a few tweaks to make it a better parking lot circulation.
So in terms of the stormwater management, no more, no less than what was already there before?
No more, no less. And by asking for it, it was, it was a much bigger leap to many other things that needed to happen. And usually, when we're just trying to consolidate underlying lots and they're not adding new square footage of impervious, we don't require the stormwater.
One thing I want to add is, not related to the site plan itself, but the surrounding area, so when consolidations happen, there are required improvements. In this case, they'd have to fix the sidewalk that's along Ogden as well, within the I dot jurisdiction.
You said they are fixing the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
That sidewalk is, it's got a big dip in it, and it's been broken for years.
Yeah, I noticed that, it's a drive-by. Okay. Okay, thank you. Just a couple of questions for the petitioner. Did I hear correctly, you spoke first, sir, that the average wait time per customer is 45 minutes? Is that what you said?
Four to five minutes.
Four to five, okay. Okay. That helps. That probably negates a couple of follow-on questions I had, with the exception of the traffic study. It doesn't appear, unless I missed it, that it takes into account the bakery traffic? Is that correct?
The traffic?
Or whoever, can't answer that. I know KOA is not here.
Repeat that for me?
I was just curious, the traffic study does not take into account, at least that I saw, correct, that the bakery traffic?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look at that again. I did, I just focused most more so on the car count for primary fast food. It labels primary fast food restaurant, which is the current establishment of Starbuds. I'd have to relook at that.
It looks like it. And then it also notes that you estimate 50% of the customers will do online orders. Is that fair?
Yeah, right.
And you allocate that just kind of based on previous stores and experience there? Okay. Real quick, can you walk through the expected traffic flow then for the drive-through? They come in off of Ogden, head south and snake around, and then where do you see them
So before, again, we had, we had two entrances off of Ogden and one off of Grant, entrance or exits. So all three were entrances or exits from this piece of property. Currently, or what we propose is closing off the one in the northeast corner so that your, your entrance and exit would be either west, more west on the property off of Ogden, or it would be onto Grant, and we would have that sign, so you have to turn left, you'd be told, so to speak, to turn left onto Grant Street. So exiting, I would say, you know, nothing's changed to the drive-through component of things. You would, you would enter from the north side, and then you would come up to the window on the south side, and then at that point, you either are going, continuing east, or you're going back to Ogden Avenue to go west.
So it doesn't force you around the north side of the building, or the east side of the building to go north, because the drive-through is on the south side of the building?
Drive-through is on the east side.
The drive-through is on the east side of the building.
The window.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm looking at two, two spots here. So yeah, the drive-through comes around, it's a, so there's a long stacking area, so to speak, if needed, which we don't, uh, presume that we will need that. But, um, so your car will be pointing north at this location here. And when you're done, you, you will be pretty much forced more so to go, obviously, left to go west to this entrance and exit onto Ogden Avenue.
Which should alleviate...
Yeah, correct. So that's, I, thank you for helping me on that one. So yeah, before it was three entrance and exits and, um, and, and so this one is kind of, I think it'll be much better than, than what we had before. More so in just the, the primary use of the fast food is not there. You know, the drive-through's still there, still exiting to the north, but...
Which is fine and it makes sense. I was just curious about the traffic flow.
Yep, so...
And making sure that it wasn't necessarily dumping onto Grant through the drive-through.
Right, no, no.
Okay. Uh, one last question, and I know that it's not our purview, but I am curious. What did you say you generated? Was that tax revenue for Riverside in four months or was it total revenue?
Tax revenue.
250,000.
250,000.
Okay. Just curious. That's all I had.
Real quick, regarding with the drive-through, our average wait time in the bakery is less than two minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoie.
I have, uh, some verifications and questions too. Any upgrade to the building is a good thing. So, you know, it's something that's, it's an eyesore driving past. Uh, it, it does need to be upgraded and I appreciate what you've done to the building. But I do have questions. Your proposed site plan really doesn't show a whole lot of dimensions, so help me walk through this, okay?
Sure.
Let's look particularly at the drive-through, right where the window is. On the ALTA survey, it shows a dimension of 49.78 to the corner of the building, which does not count the protrusion from the building, uh, at the drive-through location.
How do I zoom in on this thing? Hannah?
You should.
I know, I didn't think so. So I was trying to do earlier.
Can you zoom in on that one, don't you?
Oh, there we go. Okay, I'm sorry. Start over, start over now?
Start over?
Yep.
Okay, right at the, right at your window. Okay?
Drive-through window.
On the ALTA survey, which is not that drawing, it shows a dimension to the northeast corner of the building of 49.75 or 76. And then you have minus the protrusion of the building at the window.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have a 20-foot, uh, drive aisle, or I'm sorry, a 20-foot parking space. And my concern is you will be backing up into with parallel 90-degree parking there, having a 20-foot parking space, you would have 12 feet to navigate, uh, the reverse motion and be in conflict with the drive-through.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at that. Nothing has changed from what this property was before, but yeah, I'd have to take a look at that.
I get it.
And, and that, yeah.
The concern is you will, you will be tying people up at peak hour, they will not be able to back out of the parking space.
Sure. Okay.
And maybe...
We'll take a look at that.
Maybe that could be a diagonal. Maybe there's other things.
Correct, yep.
But I can tell you that when I do the math, because on the proposed site plan, there's no dimensions, you take the 49 minus the 20 of the parking space, uh, and then you take away the drive-through of a lane, you really don't have enough room to back up.
That's the survey.
I, I would add that if you diagonal parked there on the east side, uh, with the nose of the cars to the northeast, it would discourage exits, uh, onto Grant.
That's correct.
Well, yeah.
So I'm going there too, Doug. I think that, uh, that would be a, a good change for the site plan. And also, when you look at the, at the rear of the building, on the south side of the building, you're parking, you really can't tell when you go out there and look at the property, actually how it was striped, it's so old.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're, you're showing extended parking across the back of the building and the, the curb extends away from the building, as shown on that drawing. You don't have enough room back there either.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
And Mike, okay, I want to, I want to talk about that too because it looks like that you will not have the ability to do a bypass around the building. In other words, people that are parking on the west side, uh, if there's cars parked behind the building and cars in the drive-through, that they can't go that way. They have to go out to Ogden because there won't be enough room to do that. And I'm asking staff, the engineer, look at this because geometrically, you're going to tie up this site, uh, because cars will not be able to navigate internally.
Commissioner Lavoie, I heard you as staff, so I'll chime in on that.
Yeah.
So initially, we did request, uh, a complete revamp of the parking lot.
I'd like to see that.
Um, and the petitioner is forwarding basically a restriping exactly as it exists.
That doesn't make it right. I want, I want their operation to be successful and I want them not to have the conflicts or accidents and people backing into each other and not being able to get out of the parking space because then they're not going to come back. So I'm asking staff and the petitioner to, uh, look at that and tweak things as necessary to make it work and to make it to code. Uh, another thing about the geometry that, that hasn't been mentioned yet, and that is when you look at the site, the neighboring property to the south has a dumpster area on your parking lot.
So the dumpster area is the one that we're taking out? So our dumpster is, from what we've, uh, found, is they're using our dumpster?
They're, they also have another dumpster on the west side of their building.
Okay, so the fence that we're putting up will not allow them to, I mean, whatever they have on their property will be on their property. Our refuse enclosure is going to get moved further west out of the easement and then we're providing a fence so that they would have, they can't come onto our property to bring more garbage onto our property? If that makes sense?
Yeah, it does. But John, can I ask you to chime in here because right now, on the west side of the automotive center to the south, they have two dumpsters that gets accessed through that parking lot. And I don't want to necessarily make it a hardship on the neighboring property, uh, and have tunnel vision here.
You know, this comes down to is there an agreement, an easement, something like that of public record that when they purchased the property, they were aware of a legal obligation to permit this dumpster and access to it on their property? And in the absence of that, they are free to tell the property owner to the south, you have to move all of your dumpsters, whatever, onto your own property and figure it out. I don't know if there's any such easements or agreements of record that you're aware of. Um, they have every right as a private landowner to tell a neighbor who's using their property to remove their property.
Well, I don't think they're using their property. I think there's enough room between the existing building and the lot line. They have their dumpster. I think the dumpster, the truck actually has to come into the parking lot to pick it up. The dumpster is actually on, right where it says on that site plan, 63, on the dimension, 63, or 65, 36. The dumpsters are sitting right there. They're not sitting in the parking lot. They're on the automotive property. And my feeling is, is that the, the pickup is going to happen through their parking lot. And what I'm suggesting is that somehow with your rework of your dumpster area, that, that access or their dumpster, you know, work that out with, with the owner or whatever it is, because you're going to block them off. They don't have any room for their dumpster in front of their property. And that's the way they have operated for many, many years.
It doesn't make it legal.
That's why I'm chiming in with.
A fence is something that I think if the applicant wants to do and if village staff perceive the fence as a benefit to, to screen this property, that's their legal right to put up a fence. But I understand your concerns if it would cause a hardship to this neighbor because they have no logical place to put their dumpster, or at least to have it serviced.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they'd be willing to work something out.
That's what I'm trying to hope for.
And have a gap in the fence.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't know if that would impinge on parking spaces. You know, do they show parking there? And what if garbage service comes when there's vehicles parked there?
That's my concern.
Um, again, it's, the village can't legally require them to allow garbage trucks to access the neighbor's dumpster from their property.
Yeah, my only concern is even though there isn't a written easement, if they've been doing it for so long, there is, I mean, it's, it's been like this for over 10 years.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. I, I don't know the facts of it or to know if they actually do access the dumpster or if they roll the dump, push the dumpster out, which many businesses have to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, to the street side, perhaps they do that?
I don't think they do. I think they just pull up through the parking spaces and...
I see what you're saying.
And they pick it up. Uh, if you look at it on the aerial, if you look at it on Google, you'll see it, that that dumpster's back there and you're going to block it off, which is really going to impact that business.
Well, that's something that we, we would talk, uh, to Starbucks about and determine what we can do. Um, I know that the building's been vacant for 10-plus years, right?
Yeah.
So, so now, you know, I know the staff members were, were thinking we need to get a fence up to keep the garbage from accumulating into that other dumpster enclosure, but given their, their lockout, so to speak, on the property, you know, that's something that we'd have to work with the neighbor on to say, hey, you know, we have our dumpster enclosure, you have your dumpsters, or how are we going to make this work so that we both can use the same dumpster enclosure?
It's always good to take the high road. You know, one benefit for you coming here tonight is that you get many independent eyes looking at things.
Sure, oh, yeah.
And the whole idea here is to...
Yep.
Make comments that are constructive and, and comments that may help the business and help, help it make it better.
No, that's definitely, that is definitely a good, a good catch. Um, you know, when, when we did the, the site survey and, and everything, you know, you don't pay too much attention on where their southern property line ends. But given that there's a neighbor to the south there, right past the, uh, the automotive repair, uh, and there is a little bit of an area, it looks like about 10 feet from the property line, I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
So that's what, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure with your reconfiguration of your dumpster and their dumpster, you can work it out.
Yeah, it's actually moving west. So our, our dumpster enclosure is moving west, so there will be almost like a, a gap right between the, the northwest corner of their building and our, well, that'd be southeast corner of our property there. So that's something to look into.
Yeah, I'd just like to maybe have staff look at, be involved in that conversation too because the, it just, circulation just doesn't work internally because there's just not enough space.
It's, Commissioner Lavoie, it's, it's always been a topic of conversation. We've had many, um, businesses look at the site. There's never been a document found that authorizes the body shop to utilize this property to get access.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, staff's concerned.
I'm looking at the parking, the dimensions of, of our parking lot with the drive-through, where it is.
Yes.
With that configuration, given, doesn't work.
And one of the early comments that we made was it would be better to take the parking out by the drive-through.
Or to something, yeah.
However, the petitioner feels that having the parking spaces was, was a better benefit to them than removing the parking spaces.
Yeah.
What about if that's restricted to employee-only parking? That's exactly what I was thinking. So there's less in and out? And if an employee has to wait until a drive-through line clears out and appropriate signage is, is put, put into that effect?
Well, uh, I think Commissioner Lavoie has a point. I don't know if those parking spaces with the depth that they are and the, if someone is, if two or three cars are queued in the drive-through and they're blocking next to the building, I don't know that there's enough space for a car to get between the car waiting in the drive-through and the parked cars.
There's not.
Yes. And that's always been a concern of ours and it's always something that existed when Boston Market was there.
Yeah.
It was, it was always a, a, a less-than-ideal site plan that was...
Well, this is our opportunity. And I, you know, my eyes see this stuff and I, I want to make it, uh, so at least we don't have potential for just a total internal traffic jam and people can't get in and out of there.
Because the drive aisle whist is supposed to be 24 feet, I believe?
Um, if it's two-way, um, uh, it's less than 24 when you have angled spaces. I don't know exactly what it is, but usually it, it's less than 24 when it's angled spaces. I would guess without the code in front of me, it's probably about 19 or 20 when it's angled spaces.
Uh, the dimensions of the ALTA shows that it's like 44 feet. And that includes the parallel park, the driveway and the drive-through to the building. And that's just not enough.
Yeah. It, it, you're correct that, that this lot configuration has always been very tight, doesn't have the drive aisle whists that, um, our current code requires.
Uh, maybe, I'm, I'm, I'm not here to, to fix the problem, but maybe the thing to do here is that if you relocated your window to the south side, uh, and had people circulate, you would not be blocking those parking spaces. So I don't know if that's an option or not, but that's something else because it looks like you would have plenty of stacking. And if you just moved where your window is, uh, it might solve some problems and, and maintain that parking that, that the developer wants to use. Just a suggestion. Uh, do you have a menu board? Is there a menu board here?
No.
No, would, would there be?
I think they had one up earlier.
Oh, no, no, a menu board for the driver's.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Okay, so your, what's your average queue time in that drive-through?
Probably three minutes.
You said five minutes, three...
No, our, our inside store, it's only two minutes. I don't think...
Right. Does the bakery have any other drive-through locations or is it all?
All walk-in.
All walk-in.
Uh, the, also for staff, the, the traffic report, you know, basically, uh, didn't have a whole lot of concerns with the, the amount of volume on Ogden Avenue, but with this internal stacking and the, they didn't really address some of the concerns by the neighbors about, uh, cars exiting out to Grant, even with signage. And maybe the, the engineers could look at that. If they didn't have time to look at the traffic report, that's really important, uh, because of the other businesses there and the, the now unable to get out on Ogden Avenue. And traffic report is, is all numbers, but in reality, you are not turning westbound out of there at peak hour. You're just not. Uh, the gaps, unless you have a gap study done, uh, to show that you can get out of there when the traffic lights are red, uh, Washington and Ogden, you really are not going to get going westbound. So there's going to be a wait at peak hour. And that means the cars are going to stack up internally. Now, the benefit that I, that I see in a global sense here is that the, this property will actually benefit because the, the other facility down the street, Curly Leaf, their parking is just terrible and there's only one way in and out and they, people are coming across the turn lane, there's accidents and that, that's what we brought up then. But this will offload that, I think. And I think that some of the people that have those difficulties would rather come to a place that, uh, they don't have those issues. So, uh, but the traffic, I know it's low volume, but you're not going westbound and people travel westbound to go home. So I'm concerned about that. Um, I want, I want the engineer to look at that because it's just not, you, you can't circulate the site. You're just going to be stacking and waiting if somebody wants to go left out of, out of their aggress on Ogden.
Yeah, I'll just want to make sure it's noted that we did request the traffic statement from the start, but because of when it was provided, obviously, we couldn't get out to our reviewer before this meeting to render opinions, so...
Well, it's critical for us because, you know, we're concerned about making it right too and the residents and, and the traffic going into the residential area, that's a sensitive matter. And it's just not denoted. I can't tell, uh, by what was presented to us, is it good or isn't it good?
That's why we wanted at least forward it, forward the traffic study along with the That's why we wanted at least forward it, forward the traffic study along with the packet because they made references, references to it in their other documents as well.
If the southern, the southern parking spaces are eliminated, the ones that, you know, don't provide a, a drive aisle so cars can get to Grant Street.
East and south don't provide it.
If, if those are eliminated, that solves the problem of getting around cars queued up in the drive-through line?
Uh, what I'm, there's a couple of things that could happen. John, follow me along, you have it on the site plan. So on the east side of the building, if that existing drive-through is eliminated and it goes to the south side of the building, you don't have the cars stacked up at the window. And therefore the cars that are parked along Grant can back out and, and continue their egress. On the south side of the building, there is a green space between the building and the curb. Uh, that's, that's really could be utilized a little better there because all the people in the parking lot, they're going to want to go out. If Ogden Avenue was jammed, they're going to want to go out Grant. And they can't because the cars will not be able to navigate through there. So I'm concerned about that, you know, it's something I want to make sure that I know it's been bad. And I know it was bad for many years, we have the opportunity to make it right, and this is what I see. So I don't want, I don't want it to be, continue to be bad.
And, and the concern is, right now, they've got what, 54 parking spaces shown and they only need 16?
Correct.
So even eliminating those spots on the south and east side, they'd have a surplus of parking as required by code. But in reality, would that be, would, would the loss of those parking spaces have a detrimental impact where all of a sudden cars are parking down Grant Street or, or something else? It's, you know, trying to pick a solution that doesn't cause another solution.
I mean, if it's three to four minute wait time, I feel like, you know, it's pretty, people are pretty in and out.
Yeah, it's, it's not a fast food restaurant. And, and, you know, the parking at the south end, having that, the employee parking would be a good idea, you know, that is a good idea to do. Employees are getting there before operations start and leaving after operations end. So that would minimize those parking spaces as being potential spaces for someone to be parking as a, as a customer. I don't see any green space on that south side between the neighboring property, the, the auto body and, and ours. So there's no green space there.
No, I was thinking of the space between the build, your building and your curb.
Okay, and the, and the drive-through.
Maybe an opportunity, yes, bring it closer to the building.
Yeah, I, I, you know, whenever you remove parking spaces, it, it becomes a possible problem. So I think if there's a way that we can say that those spaces would be our employee parking spaces, then we only have the east side really to, to deal with in regards to potential backing, backing out. And that's something we would, could look at.
Well, Joe, is this something that?
That's eight spots.
That just because it's existing, it could continue to be existing? Or do you need to meet code requirements?
Um, this is, if, if they were just doing a restriping, which obviously the asphalt needs to be ground out anyways. The asphalt there is terrible. We would allow them to restripe as it is because it's non-conforming the way the parking lot was designed. So there's nothing in my code that says they have to bring it up to current standards. That's where the, we try to do our best to say, based on what they're doing, what is fair and equitable to say, please make this change. I think, I, I could see, I, I appreciate that there, that the safety of the, the employee parking is needed there. I think although not ideal, you could do parallel spaces there, you wouldn't get as many, especially if they were long-term and they were for the employees. Um, and I think if you angled the spaces on the east side because you need a narrower drive width, that could help remedy the conflict there. Obviously, still not, still not perfect to what our standards are, but maybe better. But these were some of the conversations we had early and said, you know, in a perfect world, we'd be asking for end dial-ins and, you know, and a lot more. But then we were, we were basically reconfiguring the entire parking lot. And then it's like, if we're going to go that far, then we're going to ask for a lot more, so.
I think sometimes you just test me to see if I'm going to see that kind of stuff.
I, I, I always recognize what you're saying, even when you don't say it, and I want you to know that I, I appreciate that. And I hear what you're saying. And typically, staffs already tried to have those conversations, so.
Yeah, I also like, uh, before I, I dish to the chair, I have one more question. But while I have it on my mind, I, I think that any motion that we may present tonight would include the option of our village attorney to address some of the things that are really not in our purview related to the, the delta numbers that you're speaking of. And if he, he finds it necessary to incorporate that into our motion, you know, after we're done, you know, I'd like to have that in the motion that John would have the option of, of at least introducing some language in there of, of the special use.
I'm, I'll, I'll address that now. I don't think that's a zoning concern. So I, I think it's a little bit out of the purview of this commission. I think that's more an issue for the village board to take up. If, if they're interested or have concerns or want to impose restrictions such as you have to ID.
Yeah, I don't want to impose restrictions, I want to just make sure that you have the opportunity as part of this discussion tonight and part of any motion, that you would have that opportunity.
Yeah, thanks.
Because I, I don't, I mean, this is totally out of our purview, but I, I, my alarm went off when our village attorney made mention of it, so I have that concern. I only have one more question, and that is, our, our area has benefited from another bakery. It's been around for many, many years, it's Pepperidge Farms. And the reason why we benefit from it is because every time we drive past there, it smells really good. And I know that, hey, cannabis sometimes doesn't smell too good. So tell me, or tell me that, that what's your, what the, is there any odor emulating from this site at all?
No, so there's strict guideline requirements from a mechanical standpoint. So if this was, like you just said, you know, Pepperidge Farms or, or even, you know, any restaurant that, that has an exhaust system that comes out of that hood, you know, that's how you're smelling those smells, right? It's, it's a, that, that cooking process is right there and that exhaust is being taken straight out of the building. But here, there's, there's strict requirements for that so that there's not that smell that's emulating from the building.
Okay.
There's strict requirements for the bakery? No, for the, for the cannabis.
For the dispensary.
And the bakery, there wouldn't be any smells from that bakery, all the, all the goods are. Yeah, go ahead.
Wait, you kept to the podium.
Yep.
I'd like to chime in real quick on that. Regarding the bakery, and when it's cooked on site, it smells no different than any other bakery. There's zero smell other than the actual baked product. So cannabis smell, zero, zero to none. And we invite everybody to come in at any time to Burbank and kind of just visualize, smell, see how it really feels and is.
And those products are baked on site in the bakery?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the dispensary, I, I know the product is all well sealed and doesn't result in, in odor. But I know you have a section in your operations plan about odor mitigation. I don't know if you use carbon scrubbing filters or.
We do, we do, we put them in place in the vaults.
Is that something that can also be installed in the bakery if, if there's a legitimate concern?
But operational in all our bakeries, that there's no smell.
Yeah, there's no, there's no.
There's no cannabis smell.
Cannabis smells from that side of things.
Cannabis.
Right.
It smells like a cookie.
Yeah, you bake a cookie, it smells like a cookie.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking at first about the cannabis of side of things. So the bakery, you'd have that smell of, of a bakery?
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Zakaria?
Uh, yeah, I just have a few questions. Regarding the proposed floor plan, can you kind of walk me through the back area?
Sure.
Is it, I guess my main question is, is there access from the bakery area to, you know, the vault and then ultimately?
No.
No?
Two separate, two separate entities.
Got it, okay, because it just, it appears on there like, you know, there's an opening there between, from the break, break room to the intake.
No, so this, so it's actually like an, the, the dispensary is an L shape, almost like a. So it comes, do you follow my cursor, can you see that? So the, the dispensary ends here, comes down.
Sorry, I can't.
You might, you might get to play on the screen.
Oh, here, okay. So the dispensary, there's one entrance, okay, for both entities. But the dispensary comes up and comes over, so this is the dispensary here. The bakery consists of only this space here.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
And there's a party separation wall?
Yeah, absolutely.
One hour.
Yeah.
Or anything like that, right? Typical, yeah, typical.
Got it, okay. And then, I, I know that it complies with the thousand feet from a school. I don't know, is it indicated anywhere in the packet of what that distance is? Because I know right down the street, you know, is an elementary school. So I was just curious what that distance is. And then I have a question for the attorney after.
I don't believe that we have that marked on the, on the site plan.
Got it.
They responded to it in their findings, however.
Because, I mean, it's probably about, depending on where you take the measurement from, it's probably about .3 miles or so.
For those type of measurements, we do as the crow flies, so Euclidean distancing. So it's a buffer around the property and then you take the feet from the property line to that one. In that case, it does not reach that school to the south.
Got it, okay, but there's no distance provided, just.
We can mark that, though, let's.
And then, what happens in the future if, let's say, the, the school were to acquire neighboring properties and an existing business is there and then?
I know with alcohol rules that if a school moves in, you know, with 100 feet, within 100 feet of an existing liquor licensed, licensed liquor establishment, that has no impact on the ability of the liquor establishment to continue operations. I'm 99% sure the same is true with the adult-use cannabis dispensary, that if a school chooses to move in next door, that's their problem.
John, can I ask, um, the special use center for the distance to schools is also a state requirement, correct?
It is a state requirement and measured property line to property line. And you're right, it's as the crow flies, it's not as a car drive. So they meet that distance separation requirement.
State would also be checked.
Okay, yeah, just curious. And then, this is, I guess, for staff or the attorney. Does the village have any, I guess, standards around operating hours for dispensaries in the village?
It's so highly regulated by the state and the state hours are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The village, as part of the special use, could restrict those hours, but it doesn't restrict hours for other retail establishments, so. And I think the applicant indicated that they're probably not going to be open between 6:00 AM to 10 o'clock every day of the week. They may have a later opening time, they may have an earlier close time on certain days. I think that's up to them to figure out.
I believe it's eight.
It's eight to.
I believe it's.
Eight to 10?
Eight, yeah, eight in the morning is the posted opening time, to 10 at night.
No, from the, so 8:00 AM is what they're proposing, state allows up to 6:00 AM, I believe. Additionally, we did place conditions on the other dispensary in town, so.
But, I'm sorry.
Conditions regarding their hours?
Yes. And, and if, if the special use does not set conditions on the hours, even though they're saying 8:00 AM here, they could modify those and we can't regulate it unless it's written into the special use.
So it'd be on us to write it in, is what you're saying? If we wanted to place a condition on the hours?
If that was what you were proposing and choosing to do.
Yeah.
It would have to be written in the ordinance in order for it to be enforceable for staff.
But also still have to comply with the state regulations, so.
Right.
You can have it open later than the state would require.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I, I would be in favor of having a, a standard in the village, but it doesn't sound like it's something within our, like, right now, it doesn't sound like it's a, something we would do.
John, can you correct me, I believe, because we're not doing the licensing for it, the state is. So it's not like our liquor license where we can regulate the hours of operation.
Yeah.
We don't typically regulate businesses on when they can be open or closed.
Got it.
So it would be, it would be targeting this type of business and saying, we want you to be open during these hours, and so that's why our code doesn't address that specifically. Is that fairly accurate?
Uh, it is, I, I do think you had the legal ability to say for can, adult-use cannabis dispensaries which require special use, they have to, all of them have to meet the following conditions. And that could include hours of operation. But again, just based on the history of dispensary operations in Illinois, I don't know that they pose unique traffic concerns or other concerns. There's no residential property immediately adjacent to this. I don't know what the justification would be for limiting hours. I think with the other site, there may have been a concern about rush hour traffic in the morning and having them open. And, you know, that was kind of a test site because the village didn't know what to expect by way of traffic and parking and what would happen during rush hour. What's that?
I do.
Well, I guess, you know, it goes to.
Those were my major comments about the whole thing.
The 8:00 AM, you know, people are doing drop-off at the school right down the street, down Grant at 8:00 AM. So, you know, if you have people that will inevitably be turning out onto Grant, you know, it just can cause a lot more congestion there, that's all. That's, you know, and Curly Leaf's 9 to 9, I believe. Their hours, I don't know if anybody.
I believe the condition's 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I guess then, you know, either addressing the Grant Street exit or the hours is something I'd be in favor of. Just because, you know, school drop-off happens right there at 8 o'clock, people stack to do drop-off. And, you know, if you have other cars that are turning down Grant, I think it's just, you know, not great for the neighbors there.
So I just want to add really quick, if stipulations are placed on it, normally we have conditions written in a way of if there's three verifiable violations to those conditions, they would rather have to come back and be asked by the village board or whomever to respond to those violations of some kind, so.
So they are proposing a, if I understand right, no right turn onto Grant Street sign so that all cars would have to turn left to avoid.
Correct.
Right, residential area?
By signage only.
Yeah.
By signage only, which, which is difficult to enforce.
Yeah.
But it's better than no sign.
Fair.
And if you want to make a condition that one, they have to install that sign and two, if you want to put a, you think it's necessary, a reasonable hours restriction, that's what you guys.
Well, the other thing you could do is you could also make that, you could modify the curb, the egress, the south curb to actually be a right out only, so you can only turn left, so the curb sticks out.
Yeah.
So there's only one, one way out, and that's to Ogden Avenue.
It's not a bad idea.
Can do that, too.
Do you have any questions for clarification?
Um, but yeah, I mean, that's my commentary, questions, I suppose. I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
Is that a duly?
You know, the curb. Yeah. Because, I mean, I don't want to impose additional restrictions on hours to, you know, hurt the business on when they want to open. And, you know, people are getting coffees at, that hour and, you know, I'd rather not take that route. But just to avoid people going down Grant there right at school drop-off hours, anything that can be done there, I think is a plus, for sure.
I like the idea that Commissioner Lavoie brought up with Boeing that, so you can't go right. Was, doesn't adversely impact their business.
No, I mean, something, something more than a sign.
Yeah, my feeling is that the, there are so many things related to traffic and circulation and dimensioning and egress, that I really want the village engineer to do it. And that's what I want to tag on to the recommendations because that's what he's. there for. I don't want to redesign it here. I want to let him look at it and come up with a solution that's acceptable, because I may suggest that now, but, but because of the alignment with, for example, the, the access point across the street, it doesn't quite line up, so there, there could be a conflict there with visibility. There could be other things that, that two cars could be pulling out at one time. So there's, there's other things to look at. So that's what we have him for. That's what he should do, is look at this for internal circulation, elimination of parking spaces, to create that drive aisle that people can circulate in, in the parking lot without going below the limit of the, of the required parking, and then designating staff parking spaces if necessary. But I think a relocation of the dumpster, there's other things that they could do on the site to make it much better.
Yeah. And then, sorry, just one more, just while I'm thinking of it. Because you asked it, it, will people be, for the drive-through, will they be ordering at the window, or will there be some sort of intercom?
There won't be a menu board.
There will be a menu board, okay, got it. That's it for me.
If the board made a recommendation on a, kind of forced left turn out onto Grant, would, would things be able to move forward with, they could do that through permitting? Or would that have to be a continuance?
That would be up to the village board. I don't know if they'd, when they proceed in front of the village board, if the board would want to see an enhanced site plan that shows that before approval, or if they would say that this is a condition of approval, and it's therefore has to be shown on a revised site plan prior to permits being issued or reporting the plat. I, I really don't know how to answer that and how the board would perceive a change like that. Or, or staff. I know sometimes you guys have recommended changes that an applicant has agreed to, and you say work it out between now and the village board meeting to show those changes. I know this applicant's anxious to get in front of the village board and hopefully get their approvals, so maybe it's something that the village board would require after their vote to be installed.
I just want to add that for staff, if conditions are placed or requirements for us to go back and work with the applicant before the village board, it does delay time, because we have to get reviewers to review, such as our engineer, for those type of things. So that is something to keep in mind for their process, but if that is what is required, that'd be required.
Or make it right.
I'm, I'm finished.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I have a question for, yeah. Go ahead, go with someone else, and I'll, okay, we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Peterson, you want to go?
Thank you. I don't have any issues with either of the, the business. I'm all in favor of fixing up that property. I do have a huge issue with the exit on Grant Street, and I can tell you why. I, I lived on the 400 block of North Grant for 26 years. When I bought the house in the 80s, you know, it wasn't too bad. But year after year after year, I, I can't even, unless you live there, and, unless you live there, you really don't know, and you can think that we're, I'm just, you know, saying this, but traffic is horrendous in that area. I don't live on North Grant, but I live within several blocks of this building. And not only do we have the school, that's five days a week, we have the library that's open seven days a week. If I try to back in my driveway when either school is, is, is starting or getting out, I literally cannot do it. There is so much traffic on this street. There's kids, there's elderly people, there's people walking their dogs, there's people walking to school, people walking to the library. In my opinion, you should not even have an exit onto Grant, in thinking that you're going to put a sign there and people are going to listen to it. Everyone's going to go down Grant and Trobey and Washington and over to Cass, and, and I just, you know, I agree, I, I, it will be terrible to live there. It, it would just, it would be awful, and about the, the left out, a couple streets over is the Dooley Medical Center, and they have access from Ogden, but they also have access from whatever, whatever side street is there. And they have, they have the thing where you can only go out left. And let me tell you, when I go to the doctor there or if I'm driving through, even if you have that, pointing them in the direction, I see tons of people. I don't honestly know what the fix is, but you cannot have people going out onto Grant Street. It's not safe for the kids, going to the library, the school, the neighbors, and, and, you know, they're going to be cutting through other side streets, they're going to be going over to Washington so they can come to Ogden by the light. And I, I would love your business to be there. We just have to do something with that exit onto Grant, and it, it, something seriously needs to be done, because you, you have all that traffic pouring into the neighborhood, and, like I say, it will decrease home values, it's going to cause accidents. There is a stop sign at Grant and Trobey. Several months ago, one of the neighbors was walking their dog on the leash, and the person blew the stop sign and ran the dog over. I mean, it, it, it's not like just once in a while traffic there. I mean, it's constant traffic, and we can't, we can't have any more in that neighborhood. So that's my, that's my only issue. I don't have any issues with either of the businesses or the building, but I, I am super worried about the traffic and what it's going to do, not just for the next block, but all the stuff around there. The lady's raising her hand.
Is it possible to add something to that?
Would you like to address that traffic situation?
A little bit. So I know one of your concerns was kids coming off of school. So typically, our business, and I believe their business, well, their business too, is the least busiest between 2:00 and 4:00 PM. Every single day, it's the least busiest between 2:00 and 4:00 PM. And I would say also the 8:00 to 10:00 block is not the busiest time as well. The time that's busy is like 6:00 to 10:00, for sure. So a lot of your traffic will not be as busy between those times, between 2:00 and 4:00.
Okay, today, I went to go get my mail, and it was early yet, right after lunch, and apparently, school got out early today. And, you know, so that's fine and dandy if it's certain times, but, you know, you never, I don't know what days the school gets out, half-days, you know, when they're on vacation. And, and like I say, I know you guys are trying to do your business, and I, I, I hope you go in there and you're successful, but I'm just super worried about the neighborhood. Thank you, though. That's all I have. Like I say, I have no issues with the business.
Thank you. Craig?
I'm ready. My question is on, on the licensing. Your competition down the street.
Correct.
Does not have medical license.
Correct.
It would be a plus. Reason why or the cause of you not having a medical license is, I'm asking, what's the possibility of getting it?
Well, right now, none. The state don't allow it. State has 60 medical licenses throughout the state.
60?
60. And that's all there is. Right now, there's nothing in the rules that they're planning on expanding, but between medical and recreational, product is the same, the only difference is tax purposes. The medical is taxed far less than the recreational product. But at Starbucks, we do offer equivalent discount, so a 30% discount for medical patients. This way, when the tax hits, it's almost similar to the same pricing if they were to buy it recreational.
So all you have to do is, in order to get that?
You show your medical card.
Show the license.
Correct. That's in all our stores.
Either, either the person itself or their caretaker, license-wise.
License as well, yes. Correct.
And the state lets you do that different pricing treatment?
It's not a pricing treatment, it's a discount. It's a discount for medical patients. It's done throughout the industry, and yes, states allow it.
That's up to you to whether, say, gives a discount or not.
Correct. It's like a veteran's discount or first aid discount, people that are in the health industry. It's nothing that's discriminatory, it's just a discount for different types of patients.
Mm-hmm, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sir, stay up there. I've got a few questions I'd like, starting with employees.
Yes.
On page four of our document, it says that you, you said there'd be two to three people.
That was my error.
Okay, disregard. That sounded awfully light.
Yeah, not, yeah.
Number of people on shift.
You can see in their operations plan.
And would the bakery employees and the retail store employees go back and forth? Are they two separate?
These are two separate businesses, two separate owners.
Okay. Deliveries. The bakery deliveries come through the, the south side portal there, the intake entry, along with?
No. It would not go through the Starbucks entry.
So the, your supplies would be coming through the front door?
They come through the front door. Bakery deliveries are a little bit different than Starbucks deliveries. On a typical delivery, we might have two a week.
Yeah, so I might be talking, talking to the bakery lady, but.
Yes.
So if I go to, can I get a donut, a croissant, something fresh baked, or is, are these packaged items that are coming from out of town? Are you, do you have ovens on-site? Are you baking daily? Is someone coming in at 3:00 in the morning and baking?
Yes, so typically, someone comes in around 5:00 AM. It's typically the earliest. They bake every single day, and they're fresh every single day.
Okay.
Everything has a timeline as well. We have a, like, a rotating, every single day service, so, yeah.
So there are not existing ovens in there now? You'd be putting in new ovens in, in the bakery side?
On this, on this particular site, we will not be baking on-site. We will be baking, yeah.
Sorry, we have other places that don't.
Yeah, we have, we have other locations that will bake for that particular location. Because of the size of that particular bakery, it's, it's not going to fit the actual size. So we'll be baking off-site for, for that particular bakery.
A question related to your question about deliveries?
Please.
This is probably addressing the operations plan, I'm sorry, but what's the system for delivery vehicles coming in and securely bringing product into site, onto the site, and for cash being removed from the site to be deposited and, and having an onsite, related to that, an onsite security personnel?
All right, so we got two types of things going on. One is obviously the delivery of the product onsite, and then the exiting of the cash. So first, we'll adjust to cash, it's a private carrier that comes in unmarked armored cars or vehicles, I should say, not even armored cars, armored vehicles, throughout different periods of days, times, hours, so it's not trackable or there's no pattern. And it would go through the, I don't, but through the delivery door side, and I think it's on the intake side. That's where the product, that's where the cash would exit from. Same thing with the product. The product coming in, they're delivered with, from the cultivation with a two-man delivery system. One person stays with the van at all times, another person unloads the van inside the dispensary. When deliveries do occur before the loading of, unloading of product, security is called to the back. So this way, armed security is there during the time when the door is open. Product goes in, door's closed, everything's secure, security will come back around.
Thanks.
Thank you. Customers who walk in for carryout or to have a donut inside, they will be, their ID will not be checked when they walk in the door, because they'll walk in and go immediately into the bakery.
Correct.
That's correct. Then, if, if I order something that is CBD infused, then my ID will be checked by the person there. Will they use the same scanning that the people who are going into the retail section or the cannabis section, the same software on that, or are they just?
Is the bakery doing the ID?
We, it's, he's talking about the bakery.
So that's my question, is also with the drive-in window, the same thing?
He's talking about the bakery, I believe.
How, how IDs are checked, and is it the same scanning software?
It's not the same scanning software that they have, because technically, there isn't a law that we have to do it, but we do it anyway. So we have a, another system that you put your IDs in, and it will identify if it's real or not. So we do that in all the stores anyways, because everybody is welcome to come into the bakery. You can get a regular coffee, as we said. Even your kids can come in. My kids come into the bakery, no problem. We want to be able to let people get regular coffee as well, and make sure that it seems very normal, that it's not anything out of the extreme. This is just another thing in life.
You said also, I believe, and I think it was from the bakery side, that, that a large percentage of your customers order online before they come?
Yes.
Did I understand that correctly?
They order some things online, yes.
I think that was the dispensary.
But I think the dispensary.
Oh, that's the dispensary.
The dispensary does 50%.
So for.
Dispensary side, the larger amounts.
So for the bakery?
Mostly walk-in.
Everybody's going to drive up from the menu board, they'll place their order, drive up to the drive-in window, show identification if necessary.
Yeah.
And, and move on.
And related to that, while you're up there, you have an online, a shop that sells things like pre-rolls and gummies and things like that. Are those products sold through the bakery directly to consumers, or is that just something that's sold differently?
Sold both ways.
Both ways? So someone could go into the bakery and get a pre-rolled Delta 9 infused?
Yeah, yeah, a THCA, yes.
Or a gummy or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, so you have a number of, of these outlets where, where you have the bakeries, but this would be, this would be your first outlet that has a drive-through window?
There's another one being built out at the same time, so relatively at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
To follow up your point on the distance, I, we, the findings-of-fact criteria discussed that you've met the requirements for distances from, minimum distances from schools, public parks, residential areas. I think there's also a state of Illinois regulation about distance from other cannabis retailers, as, and we know that there's one just down the street on Ogden from you. What is that distance? Is that measured the same way, or?
It is, it's been measured, and it meets that distance separation requirement. It's 1,000 feet, I believe?
It's 1,000 feet, but our, our license is exempt from the 1,000.
Hey, your social equity.
Why, why is that?
Because it's a social equity license.
Educate me, please, what, I'm not sure what a social equity licenser?
When the licenses were applied for three, three years ago, there's several criterias to apply for this license, to be a social equity applicant. Then you can meet any of these standards. One of them is be a victim of a conviction regarding cannabis. Then they implemented be a victim of, of violent crime and be harmed by that, then lived in a. Then lived in an impacted area that was, impacted drug area. And then the fourth one I skipped.
So individuals who fit into one of these categories, then?
Can apply for a license under the social equity.
And then they can get a waiver from that distance?
It's not that they get a waiver, it's just all those licenses get that waiver. All the social equity licenses get that waiver.
Is exempt.
It is ten, one thousand fifty-six feet away from the front door of the elementary.
I was asking about the law.
Yeah, I was talking about the other cannabis dealer. Okay, thanks for that. You mentioned the security guards are armed?
Yes. It's required by the state.
And all your?
All our, yeah.
All your sites?
All our facilities are armed, third-party security guards.
Well, I visited your North Riverside outlet Sunday afternoon, and I spoke with your security guard to have him educate me. And I was impressed with the operation. But I asked him about if he was armed. He said absolutely not. We don't have, we're not approved yet, or there's an application or something. But he was not armed.
It's not state required. Okay, I apologize, I misspoke then. It's not state required to be armed. So Burbank is one, Riverside is not.
There's twenty-four-seven?
Well, yeah, I understand.
Surveillance indoor/outdoor that I think the state has?
Well, there's two right now. There's the state twenty-four-seven access, and we also have a third-party twenty-four-seven monitoring system company that actually monitors our facility twenty-four-seven. It's a third-party also.
Okay, and my final question is security-related as well. In your fourteen years or so in business, have you been broken into? Have there been break-ins? Any armed robberies, anything where?
Robberies, we have not been robbed.
There have never been a robbery?
We've had early on, in 2013, when cannabis became recreational, a break-in in, not the dispensary, but into the cultivation side. We had cultivation in Colorado. And they were breaking into areas of the waste where they thought STEM was gonna do something. So they were stealing a lot of the waste. But as in dispensaries, not to my recollection, that we were...
Your facility in Rockford?
Yes.
That's where you grow the product? And you have same, I guess if I was gonna break in someplace, I'd break in there.
It's a little tougher there.
We also have not had any, except for in 2020, when we were boarded up. We unboarded the sign, and someone broke the window.
Okay.
And the product's all stored default, so even if someone broke in, they couldn't access the product, as I understand that?
They're actually breaking into stores with empty packaging.
Well...
If you're monitored by the state police and then someone else, if they see something, what's the procedure? What do they call, westbound police or?
State police is not live monitoring. State police monitors, they have their monitoring system. Now, how they do it, I couldn't tell you. They don't tell us how they do it. But with our live monitor system, they're giving a guideline from operation when we're open, from eight to ten. The guidelines are brought down, and the monitoring happens onsite, obviously, through the security company. And once we close, we have criterias where we put a geofence around particular doors and particular access points. And so once a movement goes past a geofence, it pops up on their screen, and they do have protocol. Protocol number one is to verify what's going on, to make sure that it is a break-in. If it's actual break-in, they automatically call local police. Then they notify the numbers that are on file.
And do you have a generator there in case you lose?
We do. We have generators for the security equipment.
Okay, my final comment on this is I really agree with Commissioner Lavoie and Commissioner Peterson on the parking and traffic flow. Particularly the Grant Street exit. And I think this really does merit our village engineers' report studies. I guess my question is, can we go ahead and, how do we? Do we put this on as a restriction so it can move forward, or is it a?
Mr. Chair, I first want to clarify.
Yeah.
What our engineer does is they review the traffic study or report that's provided and says, does, is it accurate? Does it look like the counts are accurate and such? Our engineer does not design or tell them how to meet your accommodations. Now, basically, when an option is presented to them, they say, does it meet the criterias for constructing, whatever it would be? So it would be this, or this commission that would say, something better needs to be done. The petitioner would need to propose what that is if we don't have... We have a sitting expert on some of the traffic remedies that could be done. Our engineer could say, well, okay, this is what I've heard you need to do, and I can review it when you bring it in, when you revise it. They don't necessarily look at that traffic study and then make recommendations to say, well, in this case, you need, because of the volume or because the requirement is we don't want right turns, this is how you fix it. We respond to what they design for us.
Well, as a minimum, I would like to see something structural similar to what we recommended at Dooley for the, to prevent the right turn out onto...
If... And for everyone that's not familiar, so basically, and I'm gonna have to use hand signals, basically at Dooley, the exit basically directs all traffic physically, but it is wide enough that if you want to disregard that and kind of pull a big turn and still go south, you can.
Well, I think that would be more effective than a mirror sign saying no right turn.
And that could probably be accommodated pretty easily with the direction to say, staff, have them revise the plans, to show something very similar to what Dooley has.
I would be.
That could be an option, so.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
I know that, thinking back to Dooley, we did have these discussions. And we were concerned at the way that, if I remember right, that Dooley access on Ogden Avenue was originally presented as a full access. And because of the alignment of Williams across the street, with it being a slight jog and having the potential for people turning eastbound, south to eastbound, across their exit, it warranted a restricted access, right in, right out. So you can't turn westbound out of Dooley on Ogden Avenue.
Well, we were talking about on the west side of the building there.
Understood.
Yeah.
This condition is almost identical because the street alignment to the north is also a slight jog. It's not lining up, so the conflict would remain. So it really, so if you're coming southbound and you're turning to the east, these people turning to the west are in conflict with each other because they're so close to each other. So somebody could happen, you know, actually have an accident there because of that. That was the concern at Dooley, and they did modify their access to be restricted. And they did also, based on our comments, restrict the access on the side street. However, like Joe said, the width of the drive enables them to swing wide and continue to drive south. And what we're saying is, we don't want that to happen. It can be the width of the drive can really restrict it, only go to Ogden Avenue.
Correct.
But the actual right in, right out, if there's a car waiting to exit their site and traffic is heavy, and that car wants to go west on Ogden Avenue, it's gonna back up traffic in the site. The traffic report did not address that. But at Dooley, you can go right, and only right. You can only go eastbound out of Dooley. And they didn't provide that here. They're saying that this is full. So, and the almost identical condition exists. So I'm very concerned about Grant and Ogden Avenue at this point.
Well, you know, but there are other businesses, the one right next door, the taco place. There's only one driveway. There's a ton of businesses.
One driveway? Their competitor down the street only has one access, that's it.
Right, but I mean, I don't want to say it's our concern, but I mean, we can't help that. That's just the way it is.
That's correct.
But so many businesses on Ogden Avenue function.
Within one access.
With one driveway.
Is the public hearing still open? Did you close the public hearing?
What's your point?
I'm just asking you, because I'm gonna...
Yes, it's still open.
It's still open. I'm just wondering about our discussion amongst ourselves, is it still in the public hearing? That's all.
Commissioner Lavoie, I just want to add that we are having a discussion about the access points. While the fire department has reviewed the current plan, any of these modifications then also require that the fire department weigh in again because they need to see that they can get around the building. And so I hear Commissioner Peterson about restriction, but we haven't confirmed that the fire department will be okay with that. That's another, that's another layer if we start talking about changes. Whereas I think the Dooley example, because of its widths, can still accommodate a fire truck if a fire truck needs to. But if we're talking about something smaller or more restrictive, then the fire department's gonna have to weigh in on Dooley still have.
Total different building, different situation. They need to bring their tower ladder in there, and they wouldn't have to do that here. But yes, there's a lot of questions, so.
So what do we do?
Yeah, I guess there are too many things for me to be in support of the site plan. The special uses, I'm okay with. But the site plan, there's just too many things that are missing here and too many things that don't work very well.
So do we put a condition on this right there?
Guess we can't.
Well, Mr. Chair, you're looking at me, so I'll try my best to answer.
Scott, you're actually running this.
Well, no, it's, if we were talking about one requested change or two simple changes, that is typically the mechanism that this commission has used that authorizes staff to work with the petitioner and then still forward it to the board. I hear multiple things. So there's always the option to continue this, ask them to make revisions, and then ask them to come back to this group. We haven't done that in my history here because we typically don't have so many outstanding issues. So I believe that the commission needs to decide if, obviously, the first is you can make a vote on the project as it is, but if it's a negative recommendation, they can forward the negative recommendation. You're not necessarily getting the fixes that you're requesting. The other is that you continue this and ask them to make revisions. Or the third option is what we typically go with is, how do we ask for changes but have the confidence that staff can work that with them before it gets to the board? So I think those are your, I'm sure there's other options, and John can weigh in on that, but I believe those are the three options.
Follow. And I think in something like this, you know, the third option Joe mentioned, where you could recommend conditions, staff can work with the applicant and/or if not completely resolved, they can go to the village board. They can decide whether this is ready for approval or whether it needs a continuance. Would be up to them.
Well, I just have a problem supporting the whole project if the Grant Street issue isn't gonna be resolved. So how do I know?
You could ask the applicant to go on record. For example, the curved curbing that sort of encourages no right turn turns? If that's something that you would be, I know you'd want that access closed off. Completely, correct?
In a perfect world, yes.
And you could ask the applicant, one, would they be willing to close off that point of access? Or two, would they be willing to install the curved curbing as a condition of approval? See what they say.
Sir, would you address that question?
Sorry, I didn't want to jump in. You guys were doing such a good job. So great comment in regards to the fire department. So if I could, so that entrance and exit off of Grant Street is much narrower than what you have at Dooley. So we, of course, we'd be happy to make that a one-way only. So you could turn, you can only go north on Grant. No one can even come in off of Grant and turn back in there, right? But the fire department is, you know, a big element to this, right? So we need to make sure that, because we're closing off that other entrance off of Ogden. So you only have one entrance now from Ogden to get onto this site. Now, by looking at the site, I think we would be fine to be able to come around this building and still be able to get out. But if we close off Grant Street completely, you know, we only have one entrance and one exit. So now it becomes a real issue for safety of the vehicles. So I know you did mention the school that is to the south. We are at the far north end of this. We are at Ogden Avenue, so the residents are mainly south of this area. And I know that we're trying to, in that perfect world, eliminate any possibility for cars to turn and go south on Grant. So I think if we were to narrow up that entrance and exit and make it, and we have to pull up that, if we could pull up the aerial too. It is odd, there is parking right there. That's a parallel parking on the street almost that's there. But it is...
Just south of there, but not north.
It's like east, yeah, so it's...
I believe it's undefined.
Right, yeah, it's undefined parking. It's probably just been there forever. So that would be, if I'm not mistaken, right, that would be on your end, so to speak. We'd work together, but we'd come up with a way to where, because right now, the, whatever that business is to the south, the repair place, they're just using it for to park their vehicles. But it is technically your property.
Yeah, I believe we would have the right to revoke any type of requirements of that unless there's an agreement with the village that I'm unaware of.
Right, so Commissioner Peterson, we would definitely be willing to do whatever we can on that entrance and exit as long as the fire department is okay with that. So if they're okay with that, we would be hundred percent on board to do whatever we need to do for that entrance and exit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And going back to, we were coming up with ideas to, you know, close that exit during certain hours, you know? But then that also becomes an issue, you know, how do you do that, right? Is it a rope?
No, I understand.
Right? And then what happens if there's an emergency, and you gotta get in or gotta get out? Then how does that work? And then someone's policing that all the time. So, you know, but we are open to whatever we need to do on that, on that entrance and exit. As long as we're still able to get that flow of people in and out of this lot, right? So you gotta remember, and I know you did live down there before.
And I still do.
You still do? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said you...
Well, no, I don't live in the same house, but I live within...
In that area.
A block and a half of there.
Yeah, so, and I understand, right? When you move into that area, things were different a while back. Now new businesses start in, and now there's more people and more traffic. And, you know, it's proximity to the main intersection, right? I grew up in Brookfield, and I was only up two blocks from Ogden Avenue, right? So there was almost nothing there. Used to ride my bike. Used to ride my back, my bike across to Congress Park almost a half a mile every day. And then the gas stations moved in. And then, you know, the fast food restaurants moved in, and everybody moved in. And then, you know, now it's like, if I lived down there, there's no way I would let anyone ride their bikes all the way to Congress Park. But there is the fact that this business is nowhere near the amount of traffic you're going to see from a fast food restaurant, and, and people staying there, it's just in and out. But I get it. If you live down Grant, it's just one more element that's, that's there. But there's always going to be a business that's going to move in here. So we're at least willing to say, and work with you, and say, let's come up with a solution there that, that help, you know, everybody's okay with, and it's safety, though, so that we're not, if we take care of, get rid of that exit completely, now we're only down to one. And I, I think that'd be a detriment to the business and be a detriment to people now trying to get in and out of this place with that one sole entrance and exit.
So with that said, then, so your third option would be if we took a vote on all four of these items, and between now and village board meeting, you guys work together with them to create that, then it would be up to the village board to determine at that point whether or not those modifications, based on their review of this meeting, were taken into account and up to their discretion, correct?
Correct. So it, it, it would be in such a way that the goal of staff is, is basically to mimic something like Dooley did, which basically means that a curb needs to be constructed out into the right of way and probably at the right radius, but still have that angle to keep people going north. But if the fire department said, this does not work for us, it would mean that it would stay the same, or we'd try to find a different solution.
Which would be brought up in front of the village board.
Yes, and that would go up to the village board. So, so there's not a guarantee that what you're recommending can happen until we can get the input of both the, the engineer and the fire department.
And does the village board meet next month?
Uh, potentially. There's multiple dates that it could follow on.
Potentially as early as next week.
Correct.
Well, well...
However, with these type of changes in review with staff, it would likely have to be further than that towards the end of the month.
We, staff needs enough time for them to make the revision, get the revision to us, us get it in front of the right eyes. In a perfect world, there's not additional revisions. That always adds time, because we, we really can't schedule it for the board until we have the finalized version. So, um, the next one, the next board meeting is on the 16th. If, if we weren't talking about changes, we could potentially have this case on the 16th. If we are talking about changes, it's probably pushing it out at least two more weeks. But then it's very reliant on the petitioner to get us those revisions and work as quickly as possible.
Which it sounds like, based on what they've conveyed tonight, they're, it's in their best interest to be expeditious and getting that...
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Yep.
All right, well, my final, yeah, go ahead.
So, how would, how would we vote? No, we don't like this, and then make the changes? Or, yes, we like it, but make the changes?
That's up to you. Generally, if you're...
Make the changes.
If you're okay with the use subject to conditions, you vote in favor of it, and it's up to the village's board to make sure that they're willing to comply with the conditions and implement them. And if they don't, then the board, even though you voted yes, they might perceive your yes vote as conditional, and, and maybe would be a no vote...
Right.
If, if they weren't willing to try and solve these issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, my final comment to you is, you're neighbor to the south. You know, you're legally entitled to take their dumpster away from them, and they would have no place for a dumpster.
Correct.
I would certainly recommend you do everything you can to be a good neighbor...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Moving in.
Right, yep.
Mr. Chair, um, the, the concern staff has is, um, they could put the dumpster in, in front of their building. There's a parking lot, it's just there's not a lot of space. If the dumpster remains where it is, and they work out an agreement, if you've seen the pavement where the trucks have basically destroyed the asphalt on this property, it would also probably mean that they need a concrete pad built on their property. Otherwise, it's going to be a maintenance nightmare. So they could strike a, a, an agreement that says, we can put a gate here, and as long as your trash is picked up when no cars are in our parking lot and we're closed. But that does not remedy the fact that that truck is still going to tear up their parking lot. So, okay.
Or the nasty neighboring property owner to pay for the concrete pad.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
So I, we hadn't talked about what the, the effects are if that stays. We've only ever talked about, well, it's really, it's a bad condition. They're using your property. You probably want them to not use your property. Which, if that shifts, you're probably going to have to change and do a concrete pad there, just so that it doesn't constantly get torn up.
Which I'll add, does require additional review from our engineer.
Make that concrete instead of asphalt?
Correct.
I don't, I don't think that, that's a hard review, but...
Right, okay, okay.
It's, it's a structure, it's a, it's, he has structural requirements when it is a dumpster pad, so...
As well as sheeting of the water, so...
Not saying we'd go this route, but there, there is nothing against the other owner being able to put a dumpster enclosure in the front of his property in one of those spaces, correct?
I believe we do have restrictions for where dumpster enclosures can be placed.
That's what I thought, right? Okay.
It would, it would not necessarily be an easy scenario to work out with them.
For them.
We'd have to figure out what could be done. And, and the easiest solution is, I don't believe body shops have odorless, like, food product, so it's, it's wheel your dumpster inside and wheel it out when it gets picked up is the easiest solution for them, so...
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last chance, any further commissioners' comments? Seeing none, under a public hearing, PZC 007 2024, have a request operate an old, a adult-use cannabis dispensing organization and a separate restaurant operation with a drive-through for the following. Special use permit request for an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization. Have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, did you formally, just generally, like, point of order, do you formally close the public hearing, and then we have a quick discussion?
No.
Are we doing that?
We used, we used to.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
No, I thought we do now. Once, once all the discussions are done, then you close the public hearing. And, and then, and then we ask for a motion to approve, and we can have additional discussion. But at that point, there's no more comment from the petitioner or the...
That's why I was asking you before.
When do, I'm still unclear, um...
That's after completion of all of the commissioners' comments and questions, then.
But in as far as when we're going to say that we want them to do those changes or not do them?
I think once the public hearing is closed, we can discuss how the conditions should be worded, and someone can make a motion with those conditions.
I get it.
Thank you, you had a good point.
I'm, I'm sorry, and would that motion be with one of these four items or applicable to all four items?
I think it would be for the dispensary special use.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking that is that's the first voting item. And I, I think if you qualify the conditions, then the other items, you already know that there's a condition on the first one. Versus if it was the last one, then it might affect the vote on all the other three.
Would it, would it not be for the site and landscape plan, three?
Legally, we can, the village can impose special conditions on a special use request.
Understood.
It's harder to do for a site plan unless there's something glaring that...
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Needs to be addressed, but...
Yeah, understood, makes sense.
Okay, again, I have a motion to approve special use permit request for an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization.
Motion, Zakiri.
Motion, Zakiri.
Second, Scales.
Second, Scales. Discussion on the item?
Okay.
Seeing none?
I think we, uh, we have to word the language on the special use, as John recommended. And that would be to reevaluate the site circulation, the access on Grant, the access on Ogden, the dumpster area reconfiguration. With staff, the village engineer and KLOA, because they did not address the, uh, traffic on Grant with this project inclusive. So, those things need to be attached to the motion to approve. But then also, the, the comment that I made before of giving the, the village attorney the option of having other restrictions related to the particular use that the, the deltas that he discussed that he has more knowledge of. I'm not imposing particular, uh, regulations, but having John have the ability to do that under the special use approval.
I think the condition can be direct the village attorney to raise the issue with the village board to determine if they want to impose any conditions on the bakery use.
Yes, just because this is not our purview.
And it would be on the drive-through, not the bakery, correct?
On the dispensary?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
No, not the dispensary.
Yeah.
That's why I want to make clear, because we made a motion for the dispensary just now.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry, you guessed the bakery.
Dispensary not used.
I just want to make sure.
Okay. Now, roll call, please.
So to, to be clear, the, the motion is to approve the special use for the can, adult-use cannabis dispensary with the conditions unrelated to the bakery that Commissioner Lavoy outlined related to site circulation, access on to Grant Street, access on to Ogden, and dumpster location improvements.
Parking and dumpster locations, access aisles.
So that's what we're voting on?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's a little bit general, but it gives some wiggle room to staff and the village's consulting engineer and the fire department and the applicant to try and come up with a workable solution to some of the concerns that were expressed.
And then that way it can still go to the village board without coming back to us?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, so I, I think that, my, my concept is, I don't want to oppose a different solution because we're not the experts.
Yeah.
Uh, we have staff, we have our consultants, we have people that are, that are going to look at this in much more detail rather than the, the flash in the pan that we look at. And that's probably the best way to do it.
So now we vote.
Is there, is there a world where they say this is the best plan?
The applicant can absolutely, in working with the village and internally determine, there's no feasible solution. The site is what it is, and ask the village board...
And it would be on the village board to...
To vote as, as is.
Got it.
The village board also has the option to say, you know, if we want to see all of these improvements on a site plan, we're going to send you back to planning and zoning for a new public hearing after proper notice, et cetera.
Yeah.
Which hasn't been done to my recollection, but it's always an option they, they have.
Got it.
So technically, they don't have to do anything?
They, they don't, but like with any recommendation you guys make, you're just a recommending body. So an applicant is free to completely ignore what you're recommending. But as you know, the village board takes the work that this commission does very seriously, because you put in a lot of the legwork, you raise the concerns that they don't always think about. So they typically take those recommendations too hard.
So ready to vote? Roll call. Do I need a new, uh, just roll call?
No, just approving the motion with the condition recommended by Commissioner Lavoy.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Second, special use permit request for a restaurant, comma, drive-in.
Motion, Scales.
Second. Thomas. Second, Thomas. Discussion, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
What was that?
Yes.
I was just having a little fun after three hours.
Next. Need a motion to approve for a site and landscape plan approval.
Motion, Scales. Second, Zakiri.
I have motion and second discussion, questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. And finally, preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate two lots into one lot.
Motion, Scales.
I have a motion, Scales.
Lavoy will second.
Second, Lavoy. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, gentlemen, you'll be contacted by staff on, on how to move forward on this. I thank the public's participation on this, and it was a difficult discussion. I, I think we've found some, hopefully, workable compromises here in a imperfect situation.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is open forum. This is public comment rules procedures set forth in chapter two, section, section two dash sixty-six of the Westmont Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone here who would like to address this commission on any issue that... Good night, gentlemen, that was not on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir, please, please come to the podium and...
I'm just trying to clarify for my own head.
Sure, your name is...
Baxter Philip with Philip's Flowers.
Oh, yes.
Our office is across the street and down a lot. I see in the notice that it's a drive-through for a restaurant, but I looked at his site plan of the win, the drive-through pickup window here and the bakery over here. I, I don't get it. Can someone clarify how they're do, what they're doing?
You have an illustration, you can pull up for him, the drive...
Before I, I want to, it's open forum. I want to make sure our attorney has released anything he needs to regarding open forum.
I, I will say this, open forum, we just had a public hearing...
Yeah.
On an agenda item.
This is on something that...
And, and that was the chance for the public to comment, ask questions, whatever. This...
I understand, but I had no comments, and the question didn't arise to me until he pulled up the diagram and said, the pickup window's here and the bakery's over here. And I said, I...
Just to finish my comments, this open forum is for residents to comment on items that aren't on the agenda but are of public interest to the village. That being said, it's in the discretion of the chair to allow this question to be asked.
And the chair would like to hear what you have to say. First, first of all, where that window is, is on the east side of the building. The cars would drive all the way around the building and pull up to that window. It's, it's an existing window.
Right. Is it to pick up bakery and drink items or to pick up cannabis?
It's for cannabis, only bakery items.
How do the bakery items get from that side of the building over to the pickup window?
The bakery is on the east side of the building.
Pardon?
I believe you have it flipped on the floor plan, so the bakery is located...
The bakery's on the east.
Correct.
Okay, he put his hand over here and said, this is the bakery.
I, I understand.
That when the top of the map was south, in that, in that depiction,
That when the top of the map was south, in that depiction, the top of the map was to the south.
Brushed it.
That was the confusing part.
Brushed it.
And we love Philip's Flowers, thanks for coming.
I'm just waiting to get to the zoning ordinance update.
Let's go to next, general updates first. Discussion of the zoning ordinance update.
Okay. So, we're somewhat in full swing of the zoning ordinance update reviews and drafts for staff level. We did present at CDC, the Community Development Committee, last week regarding it. We will have likely a follow-up discussion for CDC for the zoning ordinance update at the end of this month with a special meeting. And for this commission, you'll likely start to see discussion topics related to the zoning ordinance update as we have drafts coming online. That does not mean it's the public hearing portion, so the discussion will likely take place with just this commission without residents having the time to come up for those discussions. However, they will have the time at the public hearing portion to come up and voice their concerns and opinions once the draft's in its final form. So those discussions will likely take place at these following commission meetings.
May I add to that?
Go ahead.
So, I feel bad because someone's here just to hear this, and it's not a real in-depth discussion. It's really an update to the Planning and Zoning Committee, so something's coming towards them, and we're trying to update them as where we are in the status. So Scott mentioned that we did present to CDC. We're not presenting the entire draft to CDC. CDC gives us guidance, so there are some big topics that we're trying to address, such as, do we want additional dwelling units? ADUs is what they call them, or mother-in-law suites, or, you know, granny flats, or the coach houses. You know, do we want to allow those in our village? Those are the kind of big questions that we're having CDC address. So, CDC was not given a full draft of the entire ordinance, it's not quite complete. But we've come across some big topics that we're asking for their input on, so that we're going in the right direction when we finalize that draft. Then we'll bring it for discussion topics here, some of those same big picture items. This is the first time in 45 years we've updated this. So, we're not going to get through a public hearing in one night. We want to have the opportunity to have discussions with planning and zoning, so that when we get to a public hearing, you're much better educated in the material that's before you, so that when we bring in the public to hear what they have to say, we're a little bit better versed in understanding what we're proposing. Commissioner Lavoy?
So that would be a public hearing, when people could address this thing?
When it's a discussion topic, it is not a public hearing. There's no publishing required, we'd still put it on the agenda, we welcome the public to sit and listen to our discussion. But if we did it as a public hearing, we would probably be mostly hearing the public and not getting through our discussion. So really, we want to make sure that, planning and zoning, we hear planning and zoning say, staff, you know, you're kind of going in the wrong direction here, we don't see this, we don't support this. And that sends staff back to retool a little bit, so that we can get that finalized draft. And when we get that finalized draft, that's when we publish and invite the public to speak on that draft. And then obviously, the public has input, and we might change the draft based on what we hear. What we don't want is a scenario where planning and zoning is just learning about all these changes for the very first time, and the public is also trying to weigh in. We feel that because this is a once every 45 years thing, planning and zoning needs to be already giving their opinions, because this is the most educated commission on the zoning ordinance.
Makes sense.
So we'll be reviewing just the general changes, or all of it, and then weighing in on all of it, or anything that we'd like to weigh in on?
What we're thinking is that over the course of the summer, we'll probably bring one or two of the bigger topics, and say, well, tonight we want to talk about this new zoning district that we want to create, and we also want to talk about something else. Not overwhelm the discussion with, here's 80 pages of new code.
Yeah, dig through it.
Does anyone have anything to say about it? We want it to stay targeted.
Makes sense.
But by the time we get to the public hearing, we're going to be talking about everything in the code. Now, I know you're new to the commission, you weren't here when we decided that we wanted to update the zoning ordinance. Our intent was to address some very specific topics, not necessarily reinvent the wheel on everything. So in general, most of our setbacks are the same. We're adding, we're moving the landscape regulations, which aren't in the zoning ordinance right now, into the zoning ordinance, so it reads as better. We're looking at a new zoning district for what we call the public uses, which is our governmental district uses, which Westmont's never had it, but every other community has that kind of zoning district. We're looking at our downtown, and how can we make the zoning better in our downtown? So projects like the townhouses that came a few weeks ago, which needed a laundry list of variances, we want to make it so that they need less variances, which means we tell them exactly what we want. What's the density, what's the height, what's the setback to address the downtown? So, we think that having a few discussions throughout the summer, especially if we have a light agenda, will get everyone oriented to what's coming.
Yeah, makes sense.
Could we ask, since it is an open forum, did you have anything to say?
I'm just trying to find out, I'm Gene Keough, I'm owner of ICQ, down on Quincy. And with what I had handled before, I wanted to be sure of what I'm facing, because I'm looking at potentially putting more money into the business, and obviously, if that were something where I'm going to get pushed out.
That's right, you were part of that strong string on...
So, I give everyone a...
Years ago.
So about three or four years ago, so the stretch where this gentleman's property is, is on Quincy, just south of the tracks nestled between the two. So that was historically a kind of manufacturing-type area. And then, I want to say it was in the 80s, maybe it was in the 90s, the village rezoned all that to R4, because at the time, the village thought that that would all be replaced with the urban townhomes. And about three or four years ago, I think the village realized that that wasn't solidifying. They created a new district called the M1 District, which is the limited manufacturing, which solidified your use there. And this current proposal, because that M1 district's so new, does not target that district or rezoning over there. It's, we really don't want to revisit something that just got approved. So...
However, I just want to note that you're welcome to come to the public hearing once the ordinance is in its final form.
Yes. So, at this stage, that is not the intent of what our consultant is working on, or what staff is working on, so...
Where in Quincy is it?
So, when you go Bales?
Yeah.
And then all that stretch to the east of Bales.
He's I G E, just east of there.
Yeah, got it.
I didn't know that.
So for many years, when developers would approach us, or the property owners would want to improve their properties as, you know, a manufacturing-type use, staff's response was, well, actually, that's zoned residential, the comp plan wants residential, we can only entertain residential.
Yeah.
We did a fix to that about three or four years ago, so. So I hope you got the answer you were looking for tonight.
Good.
We've got a good business, and I'm trying to... and continue on that, and so therefore, I look at, if I'm going to put more money into equipment than that, you only need to be here, or if I'm going to get pushed out, then it's time for you to start looking at local areas.
And because you're here, I am not the expert in that district, but I believe you have some outdoor activities there, I believe. Do you have outdoor activities, like storage, or is everything indoor?
Yes.
Okay. I believe when that M1 was created, that new district, the requirement was, is that all those existing businesses did come in for a special use to solidify their outdoor activities. So if you try to expand, staff would probably say, you do need to come in and get a special use from us, but it's still within the M1 district which has permissions for that request.
When I say expand, we're talking about expanding our throughput, by putting in equipment, that kind of thing.
Okay. Yeah.
Not so much a change to the site.
Okay. It gets more complicated when you make a change to the site plan, but the zoning is there, the use is a permitted use, that's why we made those changes three or four years ago.
If you have further questions, I'm happy to answer them, if you come by Village Hall.
Yeah. Sorry it took us three hours to get to this point where we could assist you. And it's time the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think we have one more item.
Oh, really? Oh, you're correct. The next PCC meeting is scheduled for the second Wednesday of June, that would be June 12th at what time?
We will be looking at that meeting to change the time to 6:00 PM, like we've discussed prior. There'll be a public notice posted on the website for residents, so they're aware, and as well as publishing in one of our local papers. Once we solidify that, you will get an email and likely a few more reminders, so you know the exact time.
So you show up. So future meetings, we anticipate will be at 6:00 PM rather than 7:00.
Correct.
From now, from...
From now, moving, or from the June meeting, moving forward.
That causes you problems?
No, I'm good, I'm making an adjustment right now on the calendar.
That's what I'm looking for.
You just fell asleep.
And additionally, I am required to mention that some of our commissioners have trainings they need to do.
Please.
For IT, I believe, it might be HR too, maybe just IT.
I think it's just IT.
Just IT. I know, because our meetings are 30 days between them usually, you get locked out your email if you don't look into it, please open it once every one or two weeks, so you don't get locked out. We don't want you not to get the information needed, like the updates on the meeting time and the documents, because you're locked out of that email. So that's just a general.
It seems to be common that for many of you, when we send the materials at, you know, the 30-day mark, that we get a lot of, I can't get into my email.
Why are you looking at me when you're saying?
I'm looking at everyone, and that's...
He's not looking at you, he's talking to me.
Well, it's awkward when I look at Craig so closely, so basically...
You know who you are.
We can't get IT to modify their reset schedule. So the best thing is, is try to at least log in once every one or two weeks to keep it current, or else it becomes cumbersome for you, and you, and you, to have to call IT and say, help me, because IT obviously has...
Wasn't the issue.
And if you're having issues, contact me or Jamie Hoffman, we'll get them fixed for you. You may have to come in, but...
Yeah, so, again, I wasn't looking at you, Commissioner Scales.
I'm a regular caller into IT, so it's okay. You just got to put it on your phone, Scales. You won't walk out. That's right, I do need to do that, that's a good idea.
And the reason from the 7:00 PM to the 6:00 PM is to avoid the nights like we're having tonight. So, you know, it seems like we have a lot of cases that we really get involved in, and then suddenly, the night is gone.
Yeah.
Because we start so late.
And a manch village board time.
Yes, and a mere village board time, so...
I'm good with it. Yeah. Thought maybe we could start later, so we could pull all-nighters, deeper into the night.
Too old.
Now I want a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Scales.
Second, Zakiri.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.